Good evening, and thank you for viewing the June 1st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Watson is absent, but we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And I do ask, just for the sake of timing, when that comes, if everybody who wants to speak does line up, so that we're not, you know, asking over and over, it'll just help things go quicker. So if I don't see anybody lined up over there, I'm going to assume there isn't any, so we'll move on. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. And if you're on the phone, press *9 on your phone, which will raise your hand, and when it's your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone, and that will unmute you. So for each item, we will be taking the in-person public comment first, and then we will move to the online comments, and we won't be going back and forth. So if you're wanting to comment, please just make sure you're lined up or have your hands up when that time comes. So next, we have ceremonial matters. And we have a few minutes, Joanne. Yeah, you're going to be standing up there for a bit, so don't worry about it. I'll warn you. She's like, she's not going to get skipped over. So today, we have a proclamation recognizing June 2022 as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And so the proclamation will be read by Councilmember Matthews, and then I believe we have Joanne Kozelman in person to accept. So Meredith, Councilmember Matthews, will read it, and then she'll come down and present it to you. You can shake hands if you wish, and then, yeah, make whatever comments you'd like to to accept it. Right?
All right. City of Arcata proclamation recognizing June 2022 as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Whereas, there are more than 6 million Americans living with Alzheimer's dementia today, a figure that is expected to grow to as many as 13 million by 2050 if scientists do not develop a cure or effective treatment, as whereas one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia. It kills people more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Between 2002 and 2019, deaths from heart disease have decreased 7.3%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease have increased 145%. And whereas in 2020, COVID-19 contributed to a 17% increase in Alzheimer's and dementia deaths, and whereas more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid health care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. In 2021, these caregivers provided more than $16 billion hours of care valued at nearly $272 billion, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is a local issue. Our friends and neighbors need access to support services and resources to lessen the disease's impact. In Humboldt County, it is estimated that about 3,384 people currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementias. There are another 7,600 caregivers who are caring for a loved one with Alzheimer's, and whereas fewer than 1 in 5 Americans are familiar with mild cognitive impairments, MCI, which can be an early stage of Alzheimer's, 90% of physicians say it's important to diagnose MCI due to Alzheimer's, but over half say they are not fully comfortable making that diagnosed. And whereas during June, the Alzheimer's Association invites Humboldt County residents to participate in the Longest Day on June 21st. Held annually on the summer solstice, the Longest Day invites participants to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through a fundraising activity of their choice or by wearing purple. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes June 2022 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Alzheimer's Association, providing services to people and families coping with dementia. Dated June 1st, 2022, Science Stacey Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
Hi, my name's Joanne Kozelman, and I volunteer with the Alzheimer's Association. And we do an annual walk to end Alzheimer's, which we're going to be doing this October. It happens every October, the second week, the second Saturday in the month, so it'll be October 8th. And we're always looking for volunteers, so anyone that might want to get involved with this movement, we'd happily have you join our team. And we want to thank you very much for doing this proclamation. This means a lot. A lot of what we're doing to fight the disease is just coming together as a community and fundraising, but also supporting families that are facing this horrendous disease. And it is tough, so we appreciate you doing this for us. Thank you so much.
You are welcome, and if only we could do more, you know?
Yeah. We keep trying.
Thank you. So next, we have reports by Commissioner Committee, and we do have an annual report from the Parks and Recreation Committee, and we've got Sheldon here for that.
Sheldon, Committee Chair for the Parks and Recreation Committee, thank you so much for having me here today. First off, I really just want to start by thanking the staff for putting together this annual report. It's quite obvious, a whole bunch of work goes into these reports, and we're really grateful for this, so thank you so much, staff. And I'm just going to kind of give a quick list of accomplishments and some goals that we've had. We had a great study session yesterday, so I think we don't really need to get into the nitty-gritty of the report. And the first thing I'd really like everyone to take note of is that we actually had year-round recreational programs last year that were successful under COVID regulations. And again, that is just thanks to the dedicated staff we have in the Recreation Department and the support of the City Council, so thanks to everyone. Some of the Parks and Recreation Committee accomplishments were we continued to support summer camp and year-round recreational programs under COVID regulations. We supported the completion of Shea Park and city Phase 1 construction plan for multi-use court and courtyard area, and supported the selection of equipment for Shea Park Phase 2 design, along with the recommended approval of Project Rebound mural at Shea Park Basketball Court. Really pretty mural out there, everyone should go check it out. We supported trail rehabilitation work on the Forsyth Track acquisition, working with the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association, volunteer trail stewards, and local disc golfers to allow for multiple use. We provided recommendations to prioritize 3 to 5 parks and recreation implementation measures to be included in the Arcata Gateway Plan, and we supported finalization of the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan, which is a really great way to get more public arts into our community. Some of the goals we have for this year is we'd love to explore options for additional recreational improvements and programs in the Valley West area, a really important area for our community and one that has really been shown a lot of support and kind of a swelling of just need there. Continue youth and adult recreational programming and opportunities to expand to meet the community's need, including special needs citizens and seniors. We work with the Community Development Department and engage the public for input on the Parks and Recreation element of the general plan. And last, seek funding to prioritize neighborhood park improvements and equipment replacement, including Bloomfield, Mountain View, Westwood Manor, and Windsong Parks, all kind of underserved parks that need a little help. The committee has a really dedicated group of volunteers. I wish they were all here to thank them personally. It's a pleasure to work with them, and they all want to thank the council for your support this past year. We're excited about the community's upcoming projects and improving our communication with other city committees and the council, which was a great example last night. So thank you so much.
Oh, we might have some questions for you? Yeah. Or is it going to be a test? No.
No.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you again. It was wonderful having you here last night and all the community chairs, but thank you so much. My kids are really looking forward to camp this summer, so.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Just to thank you. And yeah, it was great having the study session with everybody last night, and, you know, I just appreciate everything that you and your whole committee does. It's wonderful for Arcata.
Thank you.
I just had two quick things. I was really happy to see in number 6, you did highlight it about, sorry, I think my glasses, 6 is blurry, but continuing youth and adult programs and expanding, like, for people with special needs and seniors. And so I was just, wanted to say yes to that. We've been, we do have some seniors and one person in particular who's a real advocate for seniors that calls a lot, and I know that things are really limited for them right now coming out of COVID, so I just wanted you to know that you have my support in that direction, and I know there's people in the community that would appreciate that if we can make it happen. And then just also, it has been brought up before that the teen demographic, you know, can be a tough one to reach. I think we have a lot of great things for kids, and then it kind of tapers off when you get to the teens, so just to keep them in mind.
Absolutely. I do agree that that is kind of an underserved group here in Arcata.
Yeah, and it's tough, you know, because a lot of times by the time they're teens, they're, a lot of kids are into, you know, an activity that puts them on a path, but then we have a lot of kids that aren't, and those are the ones that kind of need those. And then just a general question, has there been any movement towards or discussion about improving, like, the snack bar situation at the softball fields? I know that's been, for the, the people that rent it for tournaments and stuff have talked about that?
No, that hasn't been brought up at all, but that is definitely something we will look into.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've had people reach out, just like saying, you know, they could, they could host better tournaments, bring in more people, more money if we had a better snack bar situation, so just kind of throwing that out to you guys and to consider.
Yeah, that's great feedback, thank you.
Cool, okay. That was all, thanks, and thanks, thank you for being there last night. It was good.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item? No one online? Oh, okay.
About our teens, there is a huge gap there, so that was it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Kimberly. Nice to see you. Okay, so. Oh, yeah, if you, if you wanted to comment on this particular item about, okay, so we're, next, we're moving into early, we have a lot of people ready for these early oral communications. We're excited. So that's where we are now. So this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, so please make your way to the podium if you're wanting to comment on things that are not on the agenda. So this is the time for that, and if you are online, now would be the time to raise your hand. Okay, so go ahead.
Hello, my name is Magretta for these purposes when I have the earth flag in front of me, and I will continue as I can to address the council and others watching and attending about the urgency of the climate reality. I'm not going to call it crisis anymore because it's a reality and we can interpret it however we want, but I just want to continue to stress that in everything we do here in our small little rural college town is important for the big picture, and we're not too small of a place to make a difference, to paraphrase Greta Thunberg. So I just, as we discuss the Climate Action Plan, and as we discuss a lot of other programs that are being proposed and are ongoing, things from, you know, increasing housing at the Gateway Area and things like that, always in the context of how it will impact us for better or worse in our climate reality. And one of the things that I'm looking forward to doing is because I think getting rid of fossil-fueled vehicles in our community is important, the fact that there is now free buses in the City of Arcata for the month of June. I intended to go around on one today, but tomorrow will be my day to test out the bus system. But I also encourage anybody to tell everybody else that the buses are free for the month of June, so hop on board and visit places you wouldn't normally visit, and just remember climate first, and thank you for letting, putting up with me, putting this up every, every week at the meetings, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for being here, and good to see you folks. I just had a comment. I wanted to do a plug for the community and the planning commissioners that have been wanting to get this email thing going so they can get direct emails, and they've spoken about it for the last three, I don't want to say four, but maybe it was four, three for sure, meetings, and they're, they did a straw vote, they want to do it, they're wanting to have it happen. I think it'd be a good thing for everybody, you know? I think if you guys can help urge staff to move on this and make it forward, I mean, I can help, I can provide video footage of the parts of the meetings where they spoke, and maybe it's already in progress, but I think everybody's looking forward to that happening. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sir, were you wanting to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Yeah, so now is that time. So this is for things that aren't on the agenda.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Fred Wise. I have lived in Arcata for over 35 years. I've gotten very involved with the information about the Gateway Plan. I've made a website, which I like to equate the council and citizens of Arcata about. It has maps, all the letters that have been written, a lot of comments, opinions, my opinions at this point, providing what I believe are some solutions. It's an ongoing, growing website. I add to it almost daily. I invite members of the community, yourselves, David, to join in articles. The idea is to have a one, one place with as much information as possible. As an example, if someone wants to read Andrea Tuttle's letter, it's kind of buried in the packet for April 14th, you know? Here, it's all in one place. The, we've already had several hundred viewers from Arcata. I announced it a week ago at the planning commission meeting, and I'd like to think it's going to be helpful in bringing all the information that we can together in one spot. The, I think we all want the same thing, which is a good Arcata. It's just a question of what that's going to look like and how we're going to get there. And I hope my website helps with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in person that's wanting to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, let's go ahead and go to, oh, okay, yeah, so just go ahead and come up. Yeah, if there's anybody else that wants to speak on items not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up.
Hi, this is my first time ever coming to City Council. I thought maybe about sitting through one first before I speak, but this is kind of an urgent, urgent topic to me. What the other woman was saying about the climate situation, I think this ties into that. I think, I'm very concerned about, well, the, the rapid growth of Humboldt, the, you know, the, there's tons of, you know, new businesses and new buildings being built, and I don't think that's right because we have a very unique environment here with our coastal redwoods. It's one of the only, I think it's one of the only places on earth that has them, and it would be a shame if, you know, we kind of sold out and, sold out, you know, the environment to make money. And that's, this is a subject that's very close to me, you know? I, I was born here, I lived here my whole life, and I've watched it change so, so fast, and it's really heartbreaking to watch, you know, people who only care about money and, you know, gentrifying this place, and they don't care about the environment, they don't care about the people here. And I'm not, I'm not proposing that I know what to do about it, I just wanted to bring it up. And, yeah, I mean, I think the main cause of this problem is Cal Poly. I think that, you know, when it was still Humboldt State, it was, it always brought new people in, but it was, it was a, it was a good amount, you know? It was a good amount to bring in, like, new people in, but like, at a slow rate, and so it wasn't overwhelming the area, but, and Humboldt State used to care about the community, but I don't think they do anymore. They just care about lining their own pockets. And I received a tax survey the, last week, I think, for asking what, where they should build the, you know, student housing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
And always feel free to write us, too, if you want to write us an email or anything like that, we're always available that way, too.
All right, let's go ahead and go to online comments.
All right, our first comment is Pat. Go ahead, Pat.
Hi, Pat Carr. We're all aware of the stress that the City Council and city staff have been under recently due to some very bad behavior on the part of the former mayor. I don't want to dwell on that except to say that there is another side of the story of what's been happening in Arcata, and that side, I believe, is the positive things that we've seen coming from the council members and from city staff. And I think one example of positive things is the work of Arcata Police Sergeant Heidi Grossman, who had her bit, her thumb bitten off one day last summer while she was trying to arrest a menacing individual at the Arcata Plaza. By all accounts, Sergeant Grossman worked really hard to de-escalate the situation even after her thumb had been bitten. It was really amazing work, and I think it shows a level of dedication to being a great police officer that any city should be prouder. And even as the council and city staff have faced terrible challenges recently in dealing with the former mayor's behavior, one really notable thing, I think, is that this was an occasion when the city employee who'd been harassed was not left hanging, she was not abandoned by the city, and even though the situation has been really traumatic for a lot of people, the city sought the truth rather than sweeping the pattern of harassment under the rug, which is an outcome that, as we all know, is way too common. So I know that that leaves you all with some huge challenges moving forward, but it really impresses me that the council and city staff have demonstrated a great deal of courage and determination, and I think that that bodes well for Arcata's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, and thank you for the kind words. We appreciate it.
And there's no more public comment on Zoom.
Okay, so next, we have the consent calendar, and all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of May 17th, 2022. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. D, adopt Resolution Number 212-63 approving the fiscal year 2022/23 annual report on storm water drainage maintenance fee for all non-tax exempt parcels, and directing that said fee be collected through the property tax rolls for the fiscal year 2022 and 23. E, adopt Resolution Number 212-61 approving the fiscal year 2022 and 23 annual report on Measure A special tax for all non-tax exempt parcels, and directing that said fee be collected through the property tax rolls for fiscal year 2022 and 23. F, award a bid for the 2022 timber sale of Redwood Logs to R&amp;L Lumber, that's $1,215 per board foot, and Douglas Fir Logs to Schmidbauer Lumber at $640 per board foot, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, award a construction contract for the Arcata Ridge Trail Fickle Hill Road Crossing project to GR Sundberg Incorporated in the amount of $88,026. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $17,605.20, which is 20%, for a total of $105,631.20 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. H, reject the bid for the Arcata South Ice Street Boat Launch Facility Improvement Project and rebid the project. I, approve a dial-a-ride funding agreement for the City of Arcata for fiscal year 2022 and 23 in the amount of $83,312, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. J, adopt Resolution Number 212-68, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, compensation and benefits for hourly, part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to reflect new classification to community ambassador, lead community ambassador, and accounting technician, and title change from Equity Arcata Network Manager to Equity Arcata Network Coordinator. And K, to approve a proclamation and recognition of the 2022 inaugural Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run to support the Special Olympics Northern California, June 15th, 2022. We did get an email requesting that we pull G, so we're going to go ahead and pull G, and we will also be pulling K so that we can read that aloud, and that can be accepted in person. Are there any other items on here that council would like to pull? Is there anything that staff would like us to pull?
Nope.
And are there any members of the public that would like anything to be pulled for discussion?
Seeing none on Zoom.
Okay, so can we go ahead and have a motion for the consent items minus G and K?
Sure, I move to approve the consent calendar except for items G and K.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so G, let's go ahead and discuss that one. Did you want to update us, Karen?
Yeah, let me just give you a quick staff report. So the item before you tonight is the connector piece of the Arcata Ridge Trail over Fickle Hill Road, and this was a project, the council will recall, we completed an environmental review of that project, and we were awaiting encroachment permit from the county. We did go ahead and budget Measure A dollars to complete that, that construction of that link in this year. So when the city received the encroachment permit from the county, we did put that project out to bid. The good news is it came in, the bids came in within budget, and those are what's before you here tonight. We did receive an email today expressing two concerns within the encroachment permit that the city received from the county, and one is just a typographical error and an AP number that certainly would be corrected in the final encroachment permit that will be issued for the project. And then the other was around, the city's initial design did not have paved shoulders, and the county had put in a request to consider paved shoulders. So those were the two items. We do have, somebody raised their hand, so you might want to take that public comment, and then we can come back and, and answer questions around that.
Okay, is there, is there anyone here in person that would like to comment on Item G regarding the ridge trail crossing? Let's go ahead and take our online comment.
All right, go ahead, call-in user one, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Yuride Driscoll. Well, you got my email, I'm assuming it got shared with the rest of the council, but, you know, the point is, we have shared with the rest of the council, um but you know, the point is, we have uh through our attorneys have been trying to get this uh worked out and to no avail, your attorney has been delinquent in numerous instances, but um you can't award a contract with uh the wrong parcel number in it, so that needs to be revisited and uh we are filing an amended um complaint because as uh it's you know, this hasn't been settled, the judge has not awarded uh victory to you know, to you guys over this, there are still some serious environmental concerns that will be addressed in the mitigation process and the settlement process, so you you just need to know this, I mean, you're probably going to go ahead and uh approve this tonight, but it'll be at your peril, it'll just be a part of um the upcoming um temporary restraining order that we'll be also filing, so would much better, we would much rather have you table this, straighten out so-called typos, um you can't just change uh the county's request for paved shoulders to something else, you can't take out trees that are within a watershed, a drinking watershed, um so all you know, these things need to be worked out, I don't know why you guys don't come to us, we are more than willing to work out the right project for this situation, it can be done, it should have been done years ago, but your staff is just dragging this out, causing more and more and more problems, not only for you guys, but for us too and the people who want to use this trail, so I encouraging you to straighten this out, not just try to flip this through, this is not a good idea, um I'm just letting you know, but anyway, do as you wish and uh we will be fin- filing an amended complaint, it just depends on whether your actions tonight will require us to file another temporary restraining order, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Uriah.
Um and the city attorney is available via Zoom tonight uh to answer questions that you might have around that, my suggestion would be, um of course, the there will be a a final encroachment permit that will be issued uh to the contractor, we'll fix that AP number, uh the city's design also did not include the paved shoulders, I think it's fair for the council, if it is your desire to keep with the unpaved shoulders that we had originally uh reviewed and designed, to just simply make that as a, let's call it, an augmentation to the suggested motion tonight and we'll work with the county to try to achieve that, so that would be uh my suggestion and uh but go ahead, city attorney Diamond, if you had anything you wanted to add.
Uh no, I don't have anything to add, um you know, I I think we we have a threat of litigation and I'm not going to um suggest that we discuss a threat of litigation in open session, if we do uh you know, if we are served with an application for a restraining order, we will defend it and we'll bring that to the council's attention at the time um for further direction and action in enclosed session to discuss. Um I don't, I myself don't think that um you should delay this project because I think we have been in litigation on this project since two thousand nineteen, um there's you know, we've we've gone through the secret process, we have the encroachment permit from the county, uh the um Mr. Driscoll and the uh plaintiffs in the lawsuit have been very actively involved in both of those processes, so I I I think we we sh- we can move forward and and we'll see what happens and and bring it before the council for further direction if necessary, but I can't answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Nancy. Are there any questions or discussions or motion?
Okay, I move that we approve the award of a construction contract to GR Sundberg for the Arcata Ridge Trail Fickle Hill Road Crossing in the amount of eighty-eight thousand twenty-six dollars, authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to seventeen thousand six hundred and five dollars and twenty cents, twenty percent, for a total of one hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents, allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents and to direct staff to work with the county to amend the final encroachment permit, to fix the AP number typographical error and remove the requirement for a paved shoulder.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, motion passes, so that takes us to item K and so I will read that out loud and then we will present it to Mr. Wheatley, it's
Are you reading it out?
Oh, no, okay, I will not read it out loud, the vice mayor will read it out loud.
Thank you, mayor, okay, um so we have here a proclamation in recognition of the two thousand twenty-two inaugural Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run to support Special Olympics Northern California date um on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, whereas Special Olympics has been changing lives and attitudes for over fifty-four years and today is the largest worldwide sports organization for people with intellectual disabilities in over two hundred countries and whereas law enforcement officers from around the world have logged over five hundred thousand miles running the law enforcement torch run to support Special Olympics since nineteen eighty-one and whereas two thousand twenty-two marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of the law enforcement torch run in Northern California and we will be celebrating the inaugural torch run in Humboldt County on June fifteenth and whereas since nineteen ninety-seven, members of law enforcement in Northern California have raised over twenty million dollars in support of athlete programs making the annual torch run the largest public awareness and grassroots fundraiser for Special Olympics and whereas the city of Arcata enthusiastically supports the efforts of the Special Olympics to deliver essential health, wellness and sports programs, to promote social inclusion and to end bullying and discrimination and to join people with and without disabilities together to compete as teammates in unified sports and whereas the city of Arcata wishes to inspire greatness in our local athletes and commends the efforts of our Arcata police officers in demonstrating their moral strength and courage as guardians of the flame in support of the Special Olympics Northern California. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata, that June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two is torch run day and encourages our community to join and participate with all participating law enforcement personnel throughout Humboldt County in support of Special Olympics Northern California, dated today and signed by Mayor Atkins Salazar and I think we have Mark Wheatley here to accept.
We do, before we do that, quick, could we just approve it as a council, just since we pulled it and we didn't approve it with the whole?
Sure. And I move that we approve a proclamation in recognition of two thousand twenty-two inaugural Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run to support Special Olympics in Northern California.
I second.
Is there, are there any? No, Mark was going to speak. Yeah, is there anyone besides Mark that would like to make comment on this item?
Seeing no one on Zoom.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I told you it might be clunky, Mark, sorry, we tried.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and uh council members um for approving this and and pulling it, I I just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of draw attention to this event because it's a new event for our area, so for most of you that are not familiar with Special Olympics, Special Olympics, like the Olympics, begins with a torch run and it has, it starts in Sacramento, there's a loop north and loop south, um the track that comes through the north, it begins on June twelfth and it will come through our county on June fifteenth and so we we were hoping for a Sunday, but we got a Wednesday for our event, so on Wednesday, June fifteenth, um we will have the torch run event, which will go from the Adorni Center along through Old Town in Eureka and end on the boardwalk in Eureka, um it's about a mile walk slash run, it will be a, the torch will be making its way from county to county and so the uh law enforcement are the primary um guardians of the flame, just like the Olympics, typically, the Summer Games have always been in UC Davis for about the last thirty years, they're shifting this year to University of Santa Clara, so it's a big change, it's a big event for our area because we've not had a torch run, this is our first torch run and you can imagine it's it's a challenge for each of our departments within the county to kind of take on this sort of an effort, so uh myself, my son, my son is a Special Olympic athlete, I also have a brother that's a Special Olympic athlete and his, my son Wyatt is an athlete leader, we've taken on this project and we're working with LECA and all the law enforcement and police chiefs in this project, so um I really have to extend a big thank you, I know you, we have, I know all about the great staff here at the city of Arcata, but I really want to point out the efforts of the police department, particularly Chief Ahern was just stepped up immediately and actually uh Officer Grossman, who was mentioned earlier, she was one of the first people to volunteer to be a help in this whole effort too, so it you know, it's a it's a great event, it it serves the intellectually disabled community, this is a big event for um you know, coming off of two years of COVID where we've had a lack of fundraising efforts for many nonprofits and so this will be, the torch run is the single biggest fundraiser event for Special Olympics in Northern California. Um city of Arcata has been a leader in partnering with Special Olympics and through the schools, we did a bocce tournament for years, we also did the March Madness Tournament and thanks to the REC program, so um this is really needed at this point in time post-COVID, so I just want to invite you all, I want to invite the public, anyone else that wants to come out and support, you want more information, you can go to S O N C dot org, which is Special Olympics Northern California dot org and get more information, otherwise, come join us on June fifteenth, Wednesday, twelve-thirty down at the Adorni Center and we'll do a little mile walk, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, I actually had the privilege of attending the opening ceremonies several years ago in Los Angeles, so all the athletes walked in and they, it was pretty cool, so.
Yeah, uh we hosted the, LA hosted the USA Games a few years ago, it's being hosted this year in Orlando and will be going on concurrently and at the end of all this, the the torch makes its way down to Santa Clara and the opening ceremonies will be in Santa Clara for California this year on June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, so, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so old business is next and um this, we'll be receiving an update on the infill planning efforts, so can we have a staff report from our community development director, David Loia?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, um I will give a high-level overview of what's going on with the uh infill planning work that we're doing, um and uh the intent for tonight is primarily to cover the schedule and uh process, uh and we plan to come back uh at a your next meeting with, uh the intent is the next meeting with uh some of the engagement work that we've uh put together, uh that's mentioned in this report and so you know, this is really just an opportunity for the council to uh start to get a check-in on some of the work that we've been doing, we've been doing a lot of of uh you know, engagements outside of city meetings, we've been going to committee meetings and Planning Commission, uh but we really haven't had the opportunity yet to share with the council uh what staff is doing and and uh what we're hearing from the public, so this is the beginning of that and um you know, I I do want to start by saying, you know, the the schedule that we'll go over here is um is a proposed schedule, it's sort of in flux depending on how much uh of the material that we get through and again, the interest of the decision-makers, if you want to see uh more of this, uh we can bring more of it and so that's that's modifiable, uh but it was really uh an effort to try and communicate to uh the public when we intend to review certain topics so that they can see when they're uh of interest to them. Okay, so starting at the beginning, um this is a, you know, been a very long-term project, um we've been working on it since around two thousand seventeen in various forms, uh started out conceptual in response to some of the work that we have been doing in the community uh on on some of the the projects that uh were being processed at that time and and lessons learned from those pros- projects, um and ultimately culminated in in the couple of milestones that uh I had mentioned in the staff report, uh with the the housing element and the infill market study, those are sort of two interim documents that have been adopted to date that uh you know, the document uh stepping stones in the process of moving us towards the general plan update, now, why are we doing a general plan update? They are uh you know, periodic, long-range plans that are typically for about a twenty-year uh planning horizon and so we were, we were coming up on two thousand twenty, in two thousand seventeen, we were planning on coming up in two thousand twenty, when our current general plan was set to quote-unquote expire, when that term ran out, and so we were preparing for this work and trying to figure out, well, what what more do we need to do, what more do we need to include? And so through those discussions that we had uh with uh joint study sessions between the council and the Planning Commission, um we kind of resolved on the pathway that we're on now. So the milestones that I mentioned though, really sort of solidified a little bit of um uh you know, it solidified the pathway in a way that the conceptual discussions that we had had to date hadn't, uh and really committed us to a um you know, uh series of plans or at least a series of outcomes that the current planning work that you're hearing about in these various documents uh will help us to accomplish. More specifically in the housing element, as I mentioned in here, we committed to doing upzoning to meet our our housing element, um what's called regional housing needs allocation, I'll call it housing share for short, so we're we're responsible for a share of the housing need throughout the county, uh that share is distributed by the Humboldt County Association of Governments and we all adopt those into our our housing elements and so within that housing element, the city council committed to these upzonings uh in the opportunity zones as the primary way to fulfill those obligations, now I want to take a a little bit of a tangent here, just to identify that, you know, some people have been concerned that, you know, the long-range planning work in uh the the general plan, the changes in the land use elements that we're we're proposing, uh including some of these m- more specific area-type um changes are, you know, could produce much larger numbers of housing units than what's required in the housing element, the housing element is a periodic uh update that's required every eight years now and uh it provides a housing target within that eight-year timeframe that the jurisdiction has to demonstrate that it has at least that much housing stock um in vacant lands on on its books, um but those are shorter timeframes and in addition, not only are they shorter timeframes, but you know, you need to, in a twenty-year plan, you need to plan for, you know, much longer, um much uh you know, broader amount of growth than you would in these shorter timeframes and so they're a little disconnected, they seem like they're disconnected, there's a small number and we've heard several people say, why are you planning for this much larger number, the housing element only requires, you know, six hundred and ten units, the reason is because we need to set ourselves up so that we're able to meet the next housing element, the next one and the next one, um in addition, I wanted to point out that the housing element, those numbers are given to us by the Department of Finance, the housing element has always projected a growth that is different from our general plan, our general plan said, we think we're going to grow by, you know, twenty percent in that twenty-year timeframe and it gave a target number of twenty thousand people at the end of two thousand twenty, we got pretty darned close to that target. Um the housing element is, those numbers are given to us by the Department of Finance, they're not, they're not generated internally, they have nothing to do with what we believe our capacity to grow is, um and so it's, they're kind of two different processes and they don't really connect very well sometimes, we're obligated to meet the housing element, housing share uh each eight-year cycle, but we need to plan, apart from that housing element cycle, we need to plan for what we think that our ultimate destiny in terms of population growth will be, so that's why those are a little bit different, uh wanted to go on that tangent real quick. Um okay, so so shifting into the staff report, I'm looking at page two thirteen, if you want to look at some of the tables, I'll reference, um you know, just looking at the engagement timeline, we've, we've been working through engagement for the last five years, but really it's been in an earnest uh you know, for the last year or so, that we've been doing a lot more outreach and engagement, we had documents to look at, we've been looking at the housing element, the uh the infill market plan, uh and now the gateway area plan and so now we're actually getting our hands on these documents to review, just at the last uh Planning Commission meeting, we started looking at the growth management element, so we're going to see more of those elements of the general plan rollout and we'll have more to discuss on that and so we've tried to outline uh timeframes for when items will come to the Planning Commission in Table One, um this table has already been updated three or four times since we produced it about four weeks ago, uh Table Two is uh the topics that we anticipate seeing with the uh the city council, um and you'll note that I've got the six fifteen date for this engagement report that I uh identified earlier, uh in August, we'll give you another update um on the gateway and then September, October, we'll have had enough of the general plan elements out into uh the public review that we feel like we can give you a general plan update at that timeframe and then by November, we should be well into the environmental impact report process evaluating the impact of this planning work, the impact of, you know, the infrastructure that'll be needed to support the planned growth and the the changed land uses, so you know, you can see the difference in the topics between Table One and Table Two, Table One is very granular, looking at specific Table 1 is very granular, looking at specific elements or specific chapters within the Gateway, and Table 2 is more general, higher level. We can bring to you anything that you wish to see. If you want to get into more granularity, we're happy to bring that information to you. We think we can cover some of that through joint-study sessions. But also, you know, I just want to acknowledge and point out that the, you know, the Planning Commission is going to be making recommendations to the city council. The staff are going to be making recommendations to the city council. And ultimately, they're going to be, you know, competing ideas for what the right approach is to meet our future growth and development. And all of those boil down to a policy decision. And there's going to be, you know, policy decisions that are linked. You know, if you increase one, you decrease another. You know, the amount of parking that you have on a parcel detracts from the amount of other uses, housing or economic activities that you can have on the parcel, for example. So, if you want to increase parking to make sure that there's no impact related to parking, you're going to decrease those other activities, for example. And so, you'll see a lot of the, you know, you'll be weighing those policy-level decisions. You'll be looking at it through that lens primarily, I anticipate. So, I've tried to structure your review at that higher level for that reason. But again, if you want to look into more detail on specifics, we can bring that as So, this is the timeframe that we anticipate. You'll note that we've got this timeframe running through the end of this calendar year. We've got recommendations from the Planning Commission proposed to be coming in October. And then, I'm sorry, yeah, October. And then, you know, you would be making your decisions October through, you know, the end of the year. And we'll get into a little bit about why that timeframe is earlier, but I wanted to point out that this does put us through the end of this fiscal, or the end of this calendar year to make these decisions. We do have people who are asking us to slow down. And so, there are some people who would like to take more time, you know, than the approximate seven years that it will take from beginning to end through this process, recognizing that we're just now seeing the more detailed information in the last couple of years. Okay, so, transitioning to process, you know, I, you know, I want to acknowledge that, you know, we've heard from a lot of people, you know, speaking at the, to the Planning Commission, to the city council, you know, "Hey, look, you know, we've provided input. When is this plan going to change?" You know, and they're interested in how their input is being used. You know, we have done a lot of work to try and spread our engagement into many different venues. The typical planning process, you know, you bring, you notice a hearing before a public body, it's the city council or the Planning Commission. It happens at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. And the folks that you get into the room are very limited to those who have the ability to take that time out during that timeframe. We recognize this. The earlier councils recognized this, and they said, "Look, we want you to do better. We want you to have broader participation." Racial equity is a core value in the engagement work that we're doing. And so, we can't just expect that everyone who we are, who's a member of our community, is going to be able to show up in these forums. So, we've been going out into the community. We've been trying to meet people where they're at with our engagement, do our best to get out to as many different places as possible, offer and extend the invitation to groups that want to have us come in and talk to them, so that we can get one-on-one engagements with them. We even tried to pilot a really cool idea that we heard from Seattle, which is called a "meeting in a box," where you basically prepare meeting materials, you teach someone how to have the meeting, and then they take it to their group. So, it's not the government here to help. It's, you know, members of a community that can engage with the materials themselves. And, you know, we've had some limited success with some of these more broader approaches. And in other areas with these broader approaches, we've had really good success. The walking tours has been one area where I think, you know, the community has really appreciated those, had, you know, access to Q and A along the routes, and they were fun for staffed as well. So, all of this, trying to synthesize all of this information, and the different qualities and quantities of information as well, you know, there's a different quality of information that comes from someone who writes a letter in their own words, there's very clear data there, than the kind of information that we're gathering on these walking tours, for example. But we want you to be able to understand everything that we've collected through that timeframe. And so, the engagement report will ultimately embody all of these different engagements that we've done, and provide for you to the best that we can, you know, summaries of what we've heard, as well as the exact, you know, the underlying data. So, if someone wrote us a letter, you'll see the letter embedded in that engagement report. Ultimately, through the committee and Planning Commission process, staff is going to prepare a set of recommendations outlining changes that we believe need to be made to the documents that is based on that engagement. That's not to say that everything that someone said, they think should be reflected in those documents, will be ultimately reflected in that final recommendation. It's to say that through the combination of public engagement, what we've heard from them, our professional recommendation, the work from our professional planners that we've hired to, you know, to support us in this work, the consultants to support us in this work, as well as recommendations from these committees, will filter up what we believe are the best recommendations for the council to meet the objectives, the policy objectives, as we understand them. And then, ultimately, it'll be your tough work to balance those policy objectives and direct staff in the Planning Commission. So, the documents will receive changes once we've gotten that direction, based on those, you know, those various different types of engagements. I've kind of hit on the milestones a little bit, so I'm going to gloss over this section, but I do want to point out that the links to the milestones, the housing element and the infill market study, as well as the engagement reports that were conducted for that work, are listed here. For folks who are anxious to see this engagement report, take a look at those engagement reports. They'll be very similar. And so, you'll get a sense for what we're shooting for on that work, that body of work. I do want to just end with, you know, two topics. One, the depth of changes, or the detail, level of detail of changes that we anticipate for the various general plan elements. And I'm just going to go super-high level, because Table 3 gives you the detail, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to respond. But we have kind of three different buckets, is the way I describe it. We have some either completely new elements, or elements that are going to be completely revised, and so, there's a lot of work there, and those are going to have a lot more engagement than some of the others. Some have just very minor polishing. You know, the general plan that was adopted in 2000, the city council and the various task force and committees and public engagement that occurred at that time, is really still reflective of the community values. When we've done our visioning sessions and our values sessions with the community, time and time again, we hear from people that they're still reflected in this general plan. And so, there's many elements that only are receiving minor revisions. I do want to highlight the work that we're doing with Change Lab Solutions that was focused on health and equity. There'll be a new general plan element that reflects this, this work that we're doing, and it was really a unique partnership that was brought to us by, Jen, throw me a lifeline. I'm forgetting the name of the entity. It's... By... No, it's not the ILG. It's Humboldt for Health. The name will come to me, and I will read it into the record when it comes to me, because they've been great partners, and I feel terrible that I can't remember their names right off the top of my head.
Is it the one on page 214, NorCal for Health?
NorCal for Health, thank you. I was thinking Humboldt for Health. Very, very good. Thank you.
I underlined that part, because I had a question. I was excited about it, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They had some funds that were generated based on smoking cessation, and to help, you know, local governments adopt health equity policies into the general plan. So, they partnered up with Change Labs, and it's been a really great relationship that we've developed with them to bring a new body of policy into our general plan. I'm really excited to be able to share it with the community and with the council. Some of the policy even covers governance, which was a new one for me, so connecting health, equity, and governance together. And so, we're looking forward to sharing that. In terms of the timeline considerations, you know, I've kind of gone into detail here. There, and this reflects back to, why did we make a schedule that ends, you know, 2022, to complete all this work by 2022? I tried to give you a little bit of a background for why those timelines are being proposed. If you look at Table 4, the sources and uses on packet page 217, this is a list of really bootstrapped financing for this effort. When we started talking about this in 2017, we had about $80,000 in our general plan update trust account. So, not a whole lot of money there, really, to be able to do this effort. You see, in the sources and uses, we've got about $700,000 committed to doing this work now. My staff and I worked really hard to find sources that would help contribute to this effort. We were creative in the ways that we were able to use the development agreements for projects that were being approved, to tie to those development agreements, that they would pay us for some of this planning work, so that we could do these updates. At the same time, we were working with the state, in particular, Office of Planning and Research and Housing and Community Development Departments, working with, you know, our electeds at the state level, to let them know, you know, "Look, you're putting forward all of these, you know, climate goals and changes that need to be done into our general plans, but we just don't have the resources to be able to make those big updates." And, you know, as a result of that, there were some funds that came out of SB 2. There were a couple of rounds listed here. The round one was just SB 2. I don't know if it had a special name. And then, the other one was the local early action planning grant, which is related to what UNA presented to us the other day, the regional grant. So, they're both from the same bucket, one focusing more on regional efforts to stimulate housing growth, the other on local efforts to stimulate housing growth. And so, you know, when you look at the, you know, the raft of bills that came out in 2018, 2019, on housing element, and other bills that have come out since then, SB 9, that I've listed out in Attachment B, those are sort of the stick. So, the state has said, "Look, we're going to take your local authority away if you're not producing housing." They weren't necessarily targeting regions like, you know, or cities like Arcata. You know, I look back on our housing production, and we do a really good job. Over the last three housing element cycles, we've produced about 70% of the total number of units, maybe not necessarily in the correct categories of income levels, but we've done a really good job of producing housing. We haven't hit 100%, but we've, you know, 70% is much higher than the state, which is more like 30%. So, we're doing really well in Arcata, and the state feels like the, in general, cities aren't doing well, though. So, they adopt these draconian measures that, you know, force the hand of cities to create housing. Well, we get wrapped up in that. So, that's the stick side of it. The carrot side of it is some of these funding sources that are coming out, and we've been really effective. I mean, the SALT grant, that's Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Grant, that's managed by the Department of Conservation. We, and I'm only tooting our own horn here, because it feels good, and also because it points to the fact that, you know, these sources are really bootstrapped. But SALT reps told us that our application was the best application that they had read in the entire time that they had the SALT grant. And it was really focused on the sort of tenants that you see embedded in this infill planning work that we're doing. The idea being, we're going to conserve, you know, set up programs to conserve the green belts around us, and really rely on infill to meet our housing development into the future. That SALT grant, that's agricultural lands conservation to do a city infill plan. So, we are really stretching. We're really working hard in our grants division to, you know, get real creative. This is where I will mention ILG, the boost team in particular, you know, helped us, Institute of Local Government, helped us on numerous grant applications, helping us to refine our narrative, to make sure that they really spoke to the requirements of the grant. And so, it's been a long-term investment, both from, you know, our local staff, but also ILG, recognizing that they want jurisdictions to be able to do better. So, that has resulted in being able to secure some of these grants. Obviously, you know, like with any grant, if you don't meet the grant objectives, there are some consequences. And I've outlined in here, you know, what those potential consequences would be, so I won't go over them now. And then, lastly, you know, the housing element, you know, we did commit to upzoning to address the gap in our current housing share. And obviously, you know, anytime you're going to upzone, you're going to take it by a, you know, regional swath, you're going to upzone all the properties. So, it's going to always be a higher total of housing units that you could produce theoretically on a mathematical basis. But we committed to doing that in, you know, Measure 20 of our housing element. That was certified by the state, and so, we're kind of committed to doing that. Their timeframe for us to complete that work was by the middle of this year, and we're going to fall off of that a little bit. There's no way we're going to complete that. When we committed to this, it was pre-pandemic, pre-knowledge of pandemic even. And so, you know, we would have probably been able to meet this goal, had we not, you know, struggled with, how do we engage people in the pandemic world? So, I don't think that we'll face significant penalties for these. And frankly, some of these, you know, some of these, you know, potential penalties, you know, being, having, you know, being turned over to the Attorney General, for example, for not meeting compliance. I mean, those are, you know, theoretically possible, but I think my hope is that, you know, HCD, their enforcement unit, would look at the efforts that the City of Arcata is doing, and recognize that, you know, we're not a Huntington Beach who's thumbing our noses at them. We're actually trying to meet these goals. We're just a little off-target for timeframes. So, having said that, the, you know, the timeframes that we established early on, it really is up to the council to say, "No, we want to continue to try and meet these, so that we don't face these potential consequences," or, you know, "Or we're willing to take a little bit of risk here, and hope that we can, you know, navigate the, you know, the potential risks, and extend this out a little further." Last thing I will say is that I wanted to include some of the land use changes. There's been a lot of emphasis on Gateway, a lot of focus on Gateway, but we've been steadily building recommendations from the, from the city council, I'm sorry, for the Planning Commission, as well as work that we've done out in the community to identify other sites that would receive land use changes, that would increase the density allowable under those changes. And so, I included that land use updates under the general plan as Attachment A, this land use map. It shows that there's opportunity sites and land use changes that we're proposing all throughout the city, but really concentrated around, you know, existing economic centers. So, that's why you see the Valley West, and, you know, a lot of it is in the downtown. We have other opportunities, though, where, like the St. Louis Road area, where, you know, that could be upzoned. It's going to take a very long time for those properties to convert to higher density, more than likely, because of their existing development pattern, but it still helps us to meet some of those objectives. So, that's all I have for you on this topic. I know there are folks in the audience that have some comments they'd like to make, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the update, David. I did have a couple of questions, just about some things in the staff report, that I was interested in learning a little more about. On page 215, you guys talk about, you know, developing that racial equity and social justice element of the general plan. Do you, does staff have any idea yet, I mean, what that will look like? You do mention a working group, and how that would interact with Gateway Plan Updates, how that would interact with general plan, and all of the, you know, things that we're working on right now?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that question. The, you know, the city has been working on racial equity policy for quite some time now. You know, one of the ways that that's been rolled out is through Equity Arcata, which is a partnership with the community and the city, Cal Poly. And so, we, through that work, really committed to ensuring that we had a racial equity lens that we evaluate the existing general plan and new general plan policies through, but that we also try and address more directly policies that will provide access to, you know, that remove barriers that we see, systemic barriers that we see, that prevents people of color, people with lower incomes, other marginalized groups from being able to access either government resources, or, you know, project funding in the ways that, you know, that others can. And so, originally, the ambition was to conduct that social justice and racial equity work throughout the entire general plan. We have been working really hard to develop a group, and we've got a great, you know, network of folks that work in this area, that assist us in networking. But the problem is that everyone is very, very busy. You know, everyone is crazy busy, and really working hyper-focused on their mission to accomplish their goals doesn't leave a whole lot of time for them to work on our mission. And so, recognizing this, and also recognizing the limitations that we have with staff, we've gotten a little bit of a late start on that, but we're working right now to bring on some subconsultants under our... on some sub consultants under our prime for Plan West or to do a direct contract with, with a group that's going to focus specifically on doing this racial equity work. Help us to, to bring folks to the table that have direct lived experience that we can help to understand better what components of our policy work, what components of our policy really create those barriers so that we can find solutions to fix them. The outcome of that I'm anticipating is going to be much scaled down from what the original ambition was, where we had a complete review of the entire general plan and then specific policies that address that access. And what I, what I anticipate seeing now is to have some policy work done and then a template for how we can continue that work with the community in a way that, you know, you know, respects and honors the information that they're bringing, translates that into new policy. So I'll have more on that. We're working with the consultant to try and flesh out a scope of work and figure out how best to contract with them to do that work. But that is an area that I'm really excited to be able to, you know, bring more equity to our community. At every one of our visioning sessions, we heard that is a key value that, that Arcata has embraced, so.
Is that going to include outreach as well to these communities?
Absolutely, yeah. We've been, you know, doing consistent outreach. You know, one example is we scheduled a Spanish language mirror image of the, the event that we did at the community center. Unfortunately, we only had one Spanish speaker attend at that one. But again, this is, you know, we're, we're dealing with COVID, you know, competing, you know, interests and all that sort of thing. So we're going to try again and we're going to try and network a little bit more deeply with folks to make sure that we've got some, some folks who can attend that. So yeah, engagement is definitely a piece of that. Also, the Social Equity, Social Justice, Racial Equity Working Group will be sort of a special stakeholder group that, that helps with engagement that, you know, can, you know, can also extend, extend our, our networks beyond just who we are reaching directly. In addition, we've, just one last thing on that, because we've also developed a really unique relationship or developing a really unique relationship with the Wiat tribe. And I'm really excited to be able to bring in, you know, perspectives from the Wiat, you know, recognizing we're on Wiat land, ancestral land and, and potentially even partnering with Dishkama, the, which is the, kind of like a housing, you know, for shorthand, kind of like a housing authority for the Wiat. It's a special project that they're doing to try and create in perpetuity affordable housing that's based on a co-op model. So it's, it's really cool and exciting work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. When I talked to Dishkama a couple of weeks ago, they were saying, you know, this is Wiat land and they can't afford to, to live here. So I'm thrilled that we're including this in the conversation. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and just to add, I mean, I really do appreciate the efforts and really want to see, I mean, we provide so many opportunities for people to, to comment, but whether or not they engage, it really kind of takes two to tango to truly engage somebody in something and just to see, you know, because of all the walking tours I've been on and, you know, just events that I've gone to, it, it really is, you know, a lot of people that, yeah, have, have the day job and can, you know, get out or are the homeowners, are the people that, you know, have the freedom to attend more of these meetings. But really, you know, wanting to see the engagement towards people that rent, probably people that will live there or maybe people that live in McKinleville, live in Valley West that want to live closer to where they work as well and be able to, you know, kind of engage those populations and, you know, younger, young professionals that want to buy a place to live in Arcata where they grew up. But, you know, might not necessarily have that opportunity. So I do appreciate that though and adding that social equity element as well. And then I was going to ask another question about, kind of same page on here. The staff report talks about the housing element further required the approval process to be ministerial, not subject to CEQA for added units. I'm in this whole part here, kind of talking about CEQA planning and upzoning and the ministerial process and how all that plays together. But I was just wondering if you could just clarify that a little bit. I'm kind of looking at the middle of page 215 here and just, all I wrote on my notes was tell me more. So yeah, I mean, if you just want to explain that process a little bit and just, you know, how the housing element requires it to be ministerial and how that impacts, you know, our, our planning efforts and if there could be change in that and what that looks like.
Yeah. So the, the upzone requirements actually came as conditions through our work with the HCD representatives that work on the policy team. We presented to the, basically the way the housing element works is that you pull together all of your vacant parcels, you show them to the state, you say, these are the parcels we have, these are the densities, and so, you know, this is how much of our housing share we can cover. And traditionally, you know, going back two, three cycles, the jurisdictions that weren't producing housing were benefiting from the process because you still have the same number of vacant parcels on your list. And so you could show that same list over and over and over again. So jurisdictions who weren't producing housing were, were being supported by the policy. State recognized that and said, well, these jurisdictions who are creating housing are eating up the, the list, having a shorter and shorter list, having a harder and harder time meeting their, their certification requirements. So they switched all the rules and made it so that not only did you have to have a list of, of parcels, but they had to meet certain requirements. So they had to, you know, have, be very specific in the, in the requirements. And then they added rules that said, if you haven't met your, your objectives, if you're not meeting your objectives, then the housing, your discretion is taken away. The housing becomes ministerial. And so this has been sort of a, you know, this is like the, the standard bearer of the state in, in their housing policy. It must be ministerial. Every single one of these policies in Attachment B or every single one of these housing laws in Attachment B has a ministerial trigger. The mayor recently signed a letter opposing Assembly Bill 2011, which is making its way through the legislature right now, which essentially says that any commercial, retail or parking lot site, a site that would allow those uses as a principally permitted activity can have a affordable housing project on it with no discretion, regardless of what your general plan says. So, you know, I look at this as like a, you know, I don't, I don't, my hope is that we still live in a reality where that bill will not pass. I mean, it is just, it's insane. It's like anti-zoning. But it's, it's kind of like a shot across the bow, as I see it. This is the state intimating to the local jurisdictions, we're serious about you producing housing. And so that's, that's sort of their, their standard practice is that you have to create ministerial pathways. You can have objective standards for design that you can review a project against, but you cannot put a project through a discretionary process. And so in implementation Measure 20, they came back and said, okay, that's all great. You know, I'm glad you guys are going to upzone. You know, the, the opportunity zones that you've identified look great. There's one in downtown, one in the Gateway area, one on St. Louis and one in Valley West. That all looks good to us, but you have to make it so that those approvals are ministerial for it to count for the certification. So it's, that's, that's what that's about. That, that was basically handed to us by the state that those, those had to be a requirement.
Okay, and I think I know the answer, but for, for everybody else here, so what happens if we don't do that?
If we choose not to.
Yeah, because I know, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about, I mean, just within this plan that, yeah, what if it was not a ministerial process? And, you know, it went to discretionary review and everything. So if we decided to go that route instead of, you know, following this ministerial pathway laid down by the state, you know, what would the impact be on, on us or what could the state, I mean, come in and do, basically?
Yeah. Yeah, I will limit my response to just that because I have about a 30-minute answer for you otherwise. So again, the, the potential penalties outlined in the last section of the staff report, you know, the state could decertify our housing element. They decertify our housing element, then there, all of the HCD funds, the, you know, Community Development Block Grant, the home funds that we're using for tenant-based rental assistance, you know, the, the Sorrel Place projects that we funded, the Red Roof End that we're funding with CDBG, all of those projects we'd be ineligible for because you have to have a certified housing element to be able to apply for HCD funds. The IIG, there are several. In addition, the state has extended this housing element requirement to a lot of transportation grant funds. I can't give you a list of them off the top of my head right now, but they're continuing to expand the housing element certification process more and more into state funding for local jurisdictions, really trying to connect. Everything is, is becoming more and more integrated, you know, at the state level, whether it's, you know, affordable housing, you know, climate change, you know, all, all of it is interconnected. All of the grants that we apply for, you have to show that you've, you know, you know, accomplished all those things, that you've done, you know, equitable outreach, that you've got a, you know, affirmative, fair housing marketing plan. All of these things are interconnected now. And so theoretically, you know, we lose certification, we're not eligible for those, those grants anymore. The enforcement, the state has created, within the last couple of years, they created an enforcement unit under the policy group for HCD. Policy group typically was, you know, putting out, you know, recommendations or assistance, technical assistance on housing policy. Now they're an enforcement branch and if you're not compliant in your housing element, they come after you. They send you nasty grams. They, they provide you technical assistance. If you refuse it or can't, you know, accomplish it, they take actions against you, up to and including turning you over to the Attorney General to have them impose those, those rules on us. So it could, it could be, you know, significant. Again, I don't think that we're going to fall into that category because I get the sense that, you know, I, I hear constantly from, from, you know, public members, regardless of what they think we ought to be doing with this plan, you know, I've heard it consistently. We're for infill. We like the plan in large part. We have these significant concerns about this, that or the other. And so I would like to be able to show the state that, you know, we're working towards a, a common goal. There are differences of opinion because of that it's taken longer.
Perfect, yeah. No, thank you. Yeah, I don't think I have any more questions. Just one other thing I wanted to add, just looking at these timelines. Yeah, I would just be really happy to have hopefully a second study session with the Planning Commission, maybe sometime in September or October. But then that makes me, you know, starting to think we're going to definitely have a new council member come June and, and then come, you know, December as well, possibility of having new council member, members. Who knows, you know, anything can happen. Which, you know, makes that, January, you know, March sounds a little more comforting looking at that timeline, just to be able to get that person up to speed too. Because I know, you know, when we, we join, just how much stuff was dumped on us all of a sudden and, you know, trying to catch up and, and, you know, understanding these plans. So hopefully, you know, to whoever out there might run for city council come November, get updated on the Gateway Plan. It's going to be, it's going to be a big one. But, um, yeah, just thank you for the updates, David. I really appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. And, you know, as much as there are people that are saying, slow it down, slow it down, I'm also getting lots of emails, speed it up, speed it up. But I do appreciate this timeline. I want to talk for a second about Table Three. When we're talking about levels of revision, I'm happy to see that we're going to do a little bit more revision on bike and pedestrians and transportation, you know, especially at the study session we had last night and with the passing of complete streets and with a lot of concern about public safety. I think it's really important that we, you know, do our due diligence to make sure that whatever this plan looks like, we're taking into consideration bike ability, walkability, wheelchair ability, skateboard ability. And so I would really like to see that be a big part of this plan. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that is like. Another question I have, just on some of this funding, I think you touched on it. I mean, I know that a lot of this was during pandemic times. So how hard are these deadlines? I mean, how close are we? Because, you know, like Vice Mayor said, there is new, new council member by next month, potentially new council members in December. So, you know, there is a lot of, you know, hurry, hurry up and wait. So I just want to make sure that we, there's potential for us to lose funding. Is that correct?
There is. And we've, you know, the Department of Conservation has said that they will work with us. I think we need to have some deliverable to share with them. But I think they will work with us if we haven't finally adopted and completed the entire process, if we've made substantial progress. As far as the LEAP and the SB2 funds go, we're hearing that, no, those are, you know, those are firm fixed dates. The SB2 funds have to be expended by the middle of this year. And so we're doing everything we can to maximize expenditures on that source. And then the deadline for deliverable is the end of this year. And so unless the legislature takes action to amend those, I, I think those are hard fixed deadlines. And I don't know what kind of enforcement, you know, it's, it's kind of an awkward question to ask your enforcement or your enforcer, are you going to enforce on me if I mess up? They're not really going to commit to that one way or the other. But, but, but in the conversations, I felt like, you know, they're going to, you know, they're going to stick, you know, stick close to the timelines and, you know, put pressure on us. I don't think that they'll be turning us over to the AG.
Great. One more question about process a little. So I know a lot of people are very excited about 3D modeling, architectural representation and whatnot. So I'm happy to see that that's coming forward. Is that going to be presented like in situ? Like, are we going to see, you know, physically what it's going to look like in the place that it's going to be or is it just going to be like, you know, building?
Yeah. No, it's, it's really cool, actually. I've gotten a sneak peek at, at it. And basically what GHD did was they built the 3D model of the entire Gateway area and then surrounding out a couple of blocks. And so you can see all the existing buildings in, in sort of like a shadow model. And then they, you know, part of what's taken so long is that they essentially, they took what's called a glass box. And, and that just takes sort of like some basic setbacks and then they put the glass boxes in. And we looked at it and said, that doesn't really convey what these buildings are going to look like. You got to try harder. And so they went back and then they built a model inside the glass box, so a little bit more refined. And they came back and we said the same thing, like, that doesn't quite get us there. People aren't going to look at that and be like, oh, I get it. So they went back again and now we're in sort of our fourth iteration and we're bringing in an architect to, to do some, some renderings on top of those glass, I'm sorry, on top of those models. And then also associated with that will be some, some shade study work that we can show, you know, based on those setbacks, you know, the upper floor setbacks, you know, what a potential building could look like and what the impact would, would be on the community, the existing built environment. And then in addition, you know, paired with that, Ben Noble, one of our consult, sub consultants, is putting together a presentation on just sort of the, the educational component of, you know, what is a form-based code? How do these things work? You know, what, you know, what are, what are some good examples and that sort of thing? And so what we're proposing to do is to, again, to try and make this as dispersed a model as possible of, of public engagement will likely have a Zoom-based engagement that's at a specific time and open to the public. And then we'll take that video feed from that Zoom-based engagement and mix it down into a YouTube video that we can put on our channel so that, and that'll be paired with, you know, some, some form of, of input, maybe a survey or some, some way to provide input as you're going through that, that video, you can stop and pause and provide input. And that way we can, you know, promote that out and have other people that can't, again, come to these meetings, but could take, you know, 15, 20 minutes to watch a video and, and participate so that we can get their information into that. And then on a parallel track, once we've, you know, gotten some of that, you know, public engagement out in the, the community started, we'll start bringing that to the Planning Commission. And again, those will be videoed as well. So, you know, council members will be able to, to view those and watch those. And so the sort of two, two-track method or two and a half track method, if you will, of trying to get as broad a participation as possible and get as much community input on this community design as possible so that we can start to resolve the, the requirements that the zoning code, the, the form-based code component would have. We'd all have a good sense of what, you know, Arcata might look like in the future through that process.
Thank you.
I feel bad because you're just talking and talking, but I'm going to ask you to talk just a little bit more. You touched on like our arena numbers of 610 and how we're planning beyond that. And if you don't have the, the information in your head, that's fine. But we were recently in a meeting together and you were talking, you showed a graph of how the Cal Poly enrollment and our, and our population had tracked to a point, we kind of assumed that it was paired up. And then at a certain point, Cal Poly went this way and we went this way with our population. It's a very official. It's a very official graph representation there. And I just wondered if you had that information just in general committed to memory, because I think that that's important for people to understand, like, why our planning is vastly different than just the 610.
Yeah. I can give you the synopsis, and I'd also be happy to bring a presentation using that information back, so, you know, so the city council can take a look at that. The city adopted its general plan 2020 in 2000, and it projected 20% growth over that timeframe from current population to 20,000 at the end of the 2020 period. We ended at about 18,900 approximately was the 2020 census for the city of Arcata. But if you go back and you look at the trend line, so we hit almost that 20% number that was cited in the general plan. But if you go back and look at the year-over increases in population, you see that we grew by about 0.65% from 2000 to 2010. And then we grew closer to 1% between 2010 and 2020. And during that last period, the growth rate was increasing throughout the decade. So much higher than 1% in 2017 to 2020, and lower than 1% in 2010 to 2012, 13. So the city's population really started increasing dramatically after 2010. A lot of that, frankly, had to do with changes in policy that the councils made around our planning process and how difficult it was to get through. And so the city council had heard from many developers, from, you know, folks in the community, that, you know, "Look, the process is just impossible. We can't do this. Council made changes and we started to stimulate housing growth." During the 2010 period, even though it was on a different scale, I plotted the headcount at the Cal Poly. And the trend lines between those two, population growth in the city overall and headcount at the university, the trend lines were real parallel. And you could see, you know, some parity in like, there was an uptick here in both and then a downtick there in both. And so the student population heavily influenced, what I take from that is the student population heavily influenced the overall city of Arcata population. In the 2010 to 2020 period, there was a little bit of a disconnect in that first part of the decade, but in the second part of the decade, in particular from 2015 on, HSU's headcount dropped off considerably with the murder of Josiah Lawson and then exacerbated by the pandemic. The student population on campus dropped precipitously. And at the same time, the city of Arcata's population started increasing precipitously. So a couple things that says to me, number one, our growth is no longer tied to Cal Poly population. They decoupled. And number two, all of the housing units that the students were living in prior to 2017, 2015 are now occupied by someone else, non-students. So there's a couple of policy concerns that I think the community and the council need to be taking into consideration with that. Number one, with Cal Poly's proposed growth, even though not all those students are going to be in our community necessarily, they're proposing to have some share of them be, you know, telecommuting, online learners. There's gonna be a significant uptick in the student body. There's gonna be a significant uptick in the faculty and staff at the university. And those units that they were living in before, they're not vacant for them to come move back into. They're occupied. So, you know, our community, other communities nearby are going to have to take a share there. So that's a significant concern, I think. The, you know, the other economic development projects that are going on, the projects that are happening out at the Harbor District in particular with wind energy and, you know, the fish farm and so on and so forth, those are gonna create jobs. Those are gonna be, you know, likely new families moving into our area. And there's not a whole lot of vacancy right now. And so there's a whole group of regional thinkers and planners, people in different, you know, sectors, from finance to, you know, housing policy to planning to, you know, all over the map, that meets on a regular basis to think through, you know, how do we, how do we address this problem? You know, that's coming down, well, it's an existing problem. It's an existing problem, but it's gonna get worse. It'll be exacerbated by these projects. And then, you know, lastly, you know, we've, you know, a month doesn't go by where I don't meet someone new who's moved to Humboldt from, you know, out of the area. Right now, the average sale price in the state of California is close to $800,000. And the average sale price in Arcata is close to $500,000. And so that economic reality means that people are cashing out of their homes in other parts of the state and moving here, out competing us for homes. The, you know, houses are going for cash offer right now above asking. So, you know, that spells significant trouble for, you know, for community members. I would say even for folks who own houses. I mean, you know, you, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop because this isn't part of your question. The answer is yes. I will present to you the background data on population growth and some of the underpinnings for why we're suggesting that we plan. And I'll get into more detail on that topic at that time.
No, thank you.
Surprised Karen wasn't kicking me under the table yet.
And you did answer my question, so thank you. And since I don't think that you will toot your own horn, I just want to say, I do end up in a lot of housing-related meetings with Director Loya on sometimes in different, not necessarily as the mayor, but me in other capacities. And it always makes me really proud. The city of Arcata really, he's turned to a lot for asking these kind of questions and showing charts and our plans. And really, a lot of the community members that he was talking about, that we meet with in leadership, have a lot of complimentary things to say about Arcata and our leadership in housing and the team we have. So it always makes me really proud in those meetings. So thank you. All right. I think we've probably talked this to death, so let's go ahead and let the public have their turn for input. So we'll go ahead and start with in person. So again, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak, now would be the time for that.
For a change tonight, I'll introduce myself. I'm James Becker. I seem to forget to do that quite a bit. Hello, staff and council. I appreciate the opportunity last night to attend the study session and listen to committee members weigh in on the council's priorities for 2022, 23 projects. And wanted to highlight one of the many takeaways concerning priorities of future planning containing, by continuing outreach and encouragement surrounding strategic infill, the gateway, and also the general plan. Updates, actually. Okay. So from the Historic Landmarks Committee, Representative Bill Rich gave a suggestion to update Arcata's historic home inventory. And with that said, the city could offer pathways for updating electrical services, panels and wiring of these older homes. Updating the surfaces could lead to electrification of appliances within these homes and support other council goals of climate change adaptation. Through the restoration of these homes, you could also add to the character of Arcata, supporting economic development, the economic recovery. And the strategies by reminding visitors of Arcata's historic, you know, structures and just, you know, because he did talk a lot about, like, in Ferndale, when you come into Ferndale, you see all these old homes, and it really kind of sets you up for the feeling of what that community is. And I think there's a lot of potential here. A lot of our houses are, they're not necessarily rundown, but they're not celebrated. And I think there's a lot of them within the gateway that I think, walking around, I've taken photos, and I realize there's a lot of potential there in throughout Arcata. And I think we're gonna be a little bit of the litmus test in this process. All right. So prioritizing future planning is meant to provide public with opportunities to engage in the plan, to create land use codes that reflect the wants and needs of the community while meeting regional housing and transit goals. This brings me to a discussion of, you know, just potential for transparency as we move forward and we're starting to engage in this process with form-based codes. And just hopefully, staff will be forthcoming with a roadmap for community engagements that offer reliable plans in the form of like form-based codes and object of design standards, a little bit of time there still, that the community can weigh in on. And, you know, and they're malleable. So something that we can actually, you know, be assured that the city has a sound plan for the city and the gateway as a whole. Citing high-density structures on existing neighborhoods should be specified to preserve solar access to existing structures. This rounded approach can allow that the electrification of homes be offset by rooftop solar panels. And to me, what his idea there, I just thought was really great for looking at this as a plan for the community and not, you know, necessarily just looking at the high-density housing. I know it's important, but I mean, it is a whole neighborhood and we can kind of look at it as a whole. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
This is Joanne McGary talking. And David, you do an incredible job trying to explain sort of how entrapped local communities are by state government grants and mandates and enforcements and deadlines and all that kind of stuff, which is sort of disturbing because, you know, our community is unique. And it would be really wonderful if we could be liberated from a lot of those dictates by the state somehow, and maybe persuade them somehow that we're, we can be the future-thinking type of place that doesn't have to just do the cookie-cutter-numbered-style designs and plans and all that. I just remain concerned the young person who spoke up about growth and increasing population and how it's going to really change our community. I mean, this is a real concern. And one of the things is, in our outreach on things such as the Gateway Plan, we are not engaging significantly enough, not only Spanish-speaking, but the young people who grew up here who maybe want to stay here and, you know, what is their life gonna be like? And how are they gonna be able to live if, you know, people are coming in from other places who can afford to pay cash for a house? So, I mean, these things, our leadership really needs to look at and what we can do for that young person here in terms of how we're designing our neighborhoods, not just housing, but, you know, just the holistic thing in our neighborhoods. And speaking of housing, though, just looking at how we're building things now and checking out and see how they're doing. And I walk by the Sorrel Place on occasion. And a couple of things I've discovered in my capacity is trying to promote composting in our community because it's now state law that we're to compost our food waste. There is no program inside the Sorrel Place for food waste composting. I did talk to the manager about seeing if I could work with him somehow on something like that. But, you know, if we're having people moving into our community and they're not learning about what needs to happen, that's a concern. And then outside, as I walk by, I look at the balconies and there's already paint. I mean, there's some dirtiness and paint issues that I think should be looked at. So as we choose to infill and how we infill and who infills for us and what happens, I just want us to keep conscious of what's happening or not happening in those new projects. It's, you know, very complicated and you've got a difficult task. But thank you for listening, and I'll be back.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening. I also am guilty for not saying, stating my name. So my name is Patricia Cumbianica. I live within the Creamery District, soon to be in the middle of the proposed area of infill, the gateway. I welcome infill. I know I don't state it all the time. I started out saying it, so I just want to restate that. For infill, I think there's a lot on this plan that hasn't been clarified enough for the community to get, really stand behind. I had a whole bunch, I had a whole thing I was gonna talk about. And then somebody with their magnificent website put up a great article today, pretty much stating what I wanted to state really, really well. So Arcata One, Fred with arcataone.com beat me to the chase. And I can't say it as well as he did in that article, but he brought, he really brought up some great points. So his article today is, "Plans West, Plan West schedule were completely off course." So it took the chart of what Plan West had in their proposal to the city, and it took the chart of the schedule of work, and it broke it down. And we are way behind schedule on this plan. One of the things that really, there's a lot of things that just really hit home, but one of them was that the draft of the form-based codes were supposed to be released, or were planned in this proposal, are listed to be released with the draft of the Gateway Plan. That would have saved so much headache, so much hassle, so much, it would have helped with transparency of what exactly were you talking about. I know Planning Commission has voiced those concerns that the form-based codes, we don't have the form-based codes. So how are we really discussing this adequately? There are studies that haven't been done. There's a traffic study, a noise study, and a soils report. Those haven't been done. I just think, you know, we keep going back to this high-level discussion. And I really would like to bring that high-level review and bring that discussion out of the clouds, back down to us, bring in more detail for the community, more detail for you, more detail for the planning commissioners, more detail for the other committees, and really, really discuss, what are we looking at? It's been really aggravating. It's been really frustrating, and it would be really nice to have those things. So I think we're so far behind that we're kind of having to skip or jump or run to catch up to what our deadline's gonna be. And that's unfair. I think we really need to really put some honest work into that. I mean, we put tons of work, but I think we really have to not jump a huge step in this. And I know there's been, you know, Loya's stated that he was hoping that the community could come together and be in lockstep together. And I think the city really needs to wait for us to be in lockstep together and wait for us to catch up, bring us, catch us up. And really, we gotta move ahead together as unison. So, in unison. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Hi again. I just, I know people are saying their names. My name's Chrissy. I just want to say I agreed with you completely. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, so, I mean, I, what I was, what I was trying to say earlier about that text survey was, it was saying in that it was like, you know, agree or disagree, whatever, something that they brought up was, they wanted to build homes for students in the Indianola area. And their argument was that it's not being used, the land's not being used, and that is a blatant lie. It's farmland. And they're either talking about, you know, building in the pasture area or in a redwood farm and like replacing that with housing. And, I mean, that, those places are being used. And I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that, to see people value urbanization over natural land and farmland. It's unfortunate. And because, you know, we used to have redwoods down in the bay, but, I mean, there still are, but they're very unhealthy and they're dying back because of the pollution and the lack of moisture from pollution and overpopulation stuff. So, yeah, and, and as someone who grew up here, you know, it's very, like, everyone who, you know, everyone who grew up here, who else, my peers, you know, we're all struggling, you know, there's not enough, well, I don't want to say there's not enough housing because I think there is. I just think that there's just too much people coming in here. And I just, I think Cal Poly needs to be put in check, you know. I mean, I know that's hard to do, but I think that's what needs to happen. And, sorry. sorry. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's very difficult to watch your home transform, in it, in my opinion, for the worse. And, and, you know, like, the Sorrel Place, you know, it's, I, I know that people are trying to accommodate for influx of, you know, people and stuff, but I don't think that fits the town. I, I think it's, it's very San Francisco, you know, I don't think it suits us. Yeah, anyway. I have more points, I'm just kind of scatterbrained, but thank you very much. And I know you guys are trying, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments.
Hello, Chris Richards. I wanted to say that was a good presentation from David, and it helps to explain the process in current terms pretty well. I like that you've opened up to the idea of allowing more time to help to make the, the process more complete and better. The, I was going to talk a little bit about the prior engagement, pre, pre-draft release, pre-December 1st, and speak a little bit about that, but I think I'm going to save that for now. I, I feel that your presentation is showing that you're going to make your best effort to include the post-outreach and engagement and show a reflection, forthcoming is what you're saying in this report, soon it sounds like. So, I, I look forward to that, and I, I think giving it more time is a good plan. I know there may be some issues, but I always think with this long-term of a plan, it's, you know, like your roulette will, sometimes you've got to take a bet and try to do something better while you still can. So, anyway, that's enough for me today. Thank you, folks, for listening to me.
Thank you. Do we have any online? Oh, I'm sorry, we have one person?
Thank you. My name is Fred Wise. The, one of the reasons I made the website is because there's more to say than can be said in three minutes. The, I'm not sure where to start, except please read the article that Patricia referred to, and I'll mention that my website is translated into Spanish, Hmong, and about a dozen other languages, including Ukrainian. It's my opinion that a, the proposed schedule will not result in a plan that can be approved. In studying other cities, it takes a long time. I have great respect for David, his intelligence, his energy. It just takes longer. When we talk about the forthcoming 3D modeling, it is my opinion that the public can't understand this plan until that modeling is out, and that's essentially when the public comments will start. The, the Planning Commission has been going over the chapters. In the last meeting on Tuesday last week, their confusion was evident and spoken. They don't know what they're doing in terms of, are they supposed to providing input at this point or just looking at it? There are some major issues that are not being addressed, in my opinion. I've written a couple of articles about this. Patricia mentioned the Plan West contract. There's two parts to that. One is the schedule, the other is the tasks, as she mentioned. The, that can be gone through by Director, Lawyer, or the Council, but it should be updated. The way it is now is unrealistic. The, to me, the sooner direction can be given by the Council, the more effective this can be done. It's like any, any business decision. The, on things like the 3D modeling, on the report of public engagement, my question is, when? When are we going to see this? A date? Is it going to be a month, or two months, three months? Because that's, that's when things really start. As the Planning Commission has said, without the form-based code, it is almost impossible to evaluate the plan. We have questions of affordability, ownership, homeownership. These are real, solid items that have to be addressed. There is a couple of mathematical arithmetic errors on the table. I have copies here of updated one, and I've also assembled the paragraph below the table into, onto the spreadsheet. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, for all your work and taking the time. And do we have anyone online that's wanting to comment?
We do, all right. Our first online speaker will be Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, this is Matt Simmons. Give me one second while I pull up my statement. Hello, my name is Matt Simmons, and I am a resident of Arcata and a member of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. Not only that, I'm a renter, and so I have a perspective on the Gateway that many folks who own their home do not have. The lack of housing in the Arcata rental market is an urgent matter. With less and less available apartment units, rents go up and Arcata becomes a less equitable place to live. Both current residents, who will see their rents increase, and future residents who will be shut out of our lovely town would be harmed if Arcata decided not to build or slow-walks this much-needed housing. To reiterate, not building this housing will displace current Arcadans. In order to stress the urgency of this problem, I have collected several current Craigslist postings written by people seeking apartments in Arcata. When you're deciding whether to slow down this plan or reduce the density, please remember these folks who are in serious need of more available housing. Respectful, kind man in late twenties looking for housing, Arcata. Hey, I have been looking for a house for six months now. It's been so hard from being scanned every time. I work two jobs at Brio and as a house cleaner. My budget is $600. You won't have to think twice about having me as a tenant. I'm responsible and trustworthy. I'm pretty low-key and honestly just a respectable, respectable guy that likes good vibes and I'm really positive. It would be a dream come true to get this place. It's been hard trying to find something and make it all happen, but I'm the person to call. Thank you. Studio cabin apartment, Minable. Hello, I currently live in Blue Lake. Unfortunately, my landlord's parents have fallen ill, and they will need to use this place I rent to make them more comfortable and keep them close to home. I work at a produce farm full-time in between Arcata and Blue Lake. Also, I have the most amazing, sweet, and wonderful cat. We are very quiet, clean, and respectful. I have very good references from me and my kitty. I am looking for a place to move in by July 1st. Please help me. Any leads or suggestions are appreciated. Thank you. Please reach out if you think we might be a good fit. Studio apartment wanted, Arcata. Hi, I'm a 28-year-old male, HSU alumni, and I'm in search of a studio apartment for $800. I'm responsible, quiet, trustworthy. My rental experience includes renting a room for $600 for two years and an apartment for $783 for one year. I'm ready to move into my own place for my own peace and solitude. I do have a dog, he's housebroken, friendly and quiet. I don't drink, smoke, or party. I plan to stay long-term. If I sound like an ideal tenant, please contact me. References given upon request. Thank you. Business professional looking for an apartment, Arcata. Hello, I am a 38-year-old business professional looking for a one- or two-bedroom apartment in Eureka or Arcata. $800 to $1100 in rent preferred. I have a stable income of over $70,000 per year, over $30,000 in savings, excellent credit, 803, and a good rental history. I had a credit check and a background check done by Real Property Management in Eureka and have their approved application on file with them. Looking for a place in Arcata.
Hey, Matt, that, that's your three minutes for this, but, but your point is really well-taken. So, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. Lisa, can you unmute? Perfect.
Hello.
Yep, we can hear you.
Good evening, council members. This is Lisa Brown, and I will be referring to Exhibit 11 on Attachment A, the Zone Change Map included in your packet. It appears to indicate four or five parcels recommended for a change from RVL to RL along Buttermilk Lane in Sunny Brae. However, there appears to be a mistake. A few of these parcels are currently split-zoned between RVL, close to the road, and AR, Agriculture Residential, on the southern portions of these larger parcels. This was previously done to protect the agricultural soils on these parcels. We should not be converting these important upland, inland agricultural resources to residential uses. It might make sense to upzone close to the road to RL to be consistent with parcels across the road and provide housing. However, this area of prime agricultural soils off of Buttermilk are important to our community, especially as we face saltwater intrusion of our western prime soils over time with sea level rise. There are currently at least two active dirt farm parts, dirt farm projects in this area, as well as cattle, sheep, and horse grazing. I believe this area will become increasingly important to our community for food production in the future. In the case that the RA zoning is no longer used, the southern portions of these particular parcels should be changed to ag-exclusive, to be consistent with the important value that we hold in Arcata of protecting these important soils. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, our next speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you. Good evening, this is Colin Fisk, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. And CRTP's members include organizations such as EPIC, the North Coast Environmental Center, 350 Humboldt, and Humboldt Baykeeper, as well as many individuals. CRTP continues to urge you to adopt and implement the Gateway Plan and other similar measures in the general plan as rapidly as possible. As you all know, we desperately need more housing in the community. Many people who live here are in areas situations or have no housing at all, and many other people, of course, want to live here and are already priced out. We also desperately need to build housing for jobs, services, recreation, and public transit in order to enable low-carbon forms of transportation, which address our biggest contributor to the climate crisis, which is cars and trucks. And if we want a significant number of people that have access to these forms of healthy, sustainable transportation, we need that housing to be relatively dense. And furthermore, if we're going to lower emissions in time to avoid the worst impacts of climate change, we're going to have to build a lot of that housing in the next decade. The draft Gateway Plan allows and encourages the housing we need in the kind of dense, walkable neighborhood that we also need, which is great, but, you know, if we drag out this process for a long time, for the next year or even longer, we'll be far behind where we need to be in the timeline for actual production of housing and rebuilding of the transportation infrastructure. Similarly, if we write the plan such that each project requires lengthy discretionary review, we will likely not see the kind of development we need, and certainly not on a timescale that's meaningful for the climate, let alone for all the people you just heard about who are looking for housing right now. Currently, the city code already allows most single-family homes to be approved ministerially, but requires discretionary review, design review for multifamily housing, which frankly discourages the climate-smart, affordable housing that we need. The housing crisis and the climate crisis are, in many ways, the same, and so I think the Gateway Plan is both housing action and climate action. It's certainly not a silver bullet, but it's a major step forward, and we urge you to move ahead and write the form-based code and implement the plan and do it as soon as we can. And I want to end on a personal note. You heard from a lot of people I know who are afraid of the change that will come to the community if we implement the draft Gateway Plan, but for me, the plan actually gives me hope. Change is coming, we know whether we like it or not, but a plan like this is one of the first steps for ensuring that change is actually good for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
All right, then our last online speaker is Pat. Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, hi, Pat Vargan. I just want to say that I have always been a great lover of wide-open spaces. And it may seem ironic, but that, that is really the biggest factor in my being a supporter of increased infill and increased, I guess, I'd say, urbanization of the city of Arcata. You know, basically, we don't have a prayer of being able to provide housing for people, even younger people living here, much, much less other people moving here to be students at Cal Poly Humboldt, or work wind farms, or aqua farms, or things like that. We don't have a prayer of doing that without paving over our farmlands, wetlands, and, you know, potentially cutting forests to the east of us, forest lands being reduced to housing developments, unless we really ramp up our infill here within Arcata. And I am hopeful, hopeful as well, that that would be a factor in making housing more affordable, because we clearly face a housing affordability crisis for so many people who are priced out of the rental market, priced out of the housing market in terms of purchasing, and that's making Humboldt and Arcata specifically a, a less livable place. So, I'm, I'm really happy that the city of Arcata is moving in a more infill direction. I second the opinion that I would like to see that move faster, because I, I think it is really imperative that we make these changes rapidly to reduce our transportation emissions, to make people have the option of living much closer to transit, much closer to work environments, and be able to reduce our overall footprint. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat.
And no further comments.
Okay, so, in the recommendations, the last part of it says, "Provide direction as warranted." Is there any direction that you need from us, or are we good to move on?
The one piece I heard was to start scheduling the second study session, so we'll work on doing that, too. I know we did set the first study session for July 12th, and in part, that was because we will have the June election, and even, sometimes it might take the county longer to certify that election, but we certainly should know who that new council member will be, and they should be able to attend that meeting then. So, we'll work to the, to get the second one on the books, too.
Yeah, and just, just to add one other point to that, I mean, yeah, we were talking about, you know, the, people want council to take action, but we couldn't take any action. We don't even, because you'd have to recuse yourself, we don't have a quorum, so, you know, it's, we're kind of sitting in that boat lately, so, looking forward to having more people, but, yeah, we're, we're trying as hard as we can with what we got.
All right, so we do, we do have a couple more items on the agenda, and I think it'll probably be good to take a five-minute break. So, we'll come back at 8:15. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. So we're going, heading into new business. We've got two items. First is Item A, conduct a public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners listed on report of 2021 lien letter recipients of delinquent garbage account fees, and make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems just, after which, Adoption Resolution Number 212-66, confirming the report of 2021 delinquent garbage account fees for lien. Could we please have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkorn?
Good evening, council and community members. Stepping in for Emily Sinkorn is Emily Benve, Deputy Director. The two Emilys always provides a laugh. So I will provide a really brief background before jumping into the specifics of the staff report, which is that the city of Arcata requires all occupied premises to subscribe and pay for garbage and recycling services, and that is required by state law as well as city ordinance. Tenants may subscribe and pay for services themselves, but ultimately, the responsibility lies with the property owner. So that's the framing. There is provision in state law that enables the city to forward delinquent accounts, amounts, to the county assessor to be assessed as a lien on the property and collected with the typical property tax collection procedures, and that is based on appropriate notification to the property owners. The notification in the Government Code section is 60 days. However, the city typically operates on an annual basis, so we're, in May, the delinquent accounts before you are delinquent through the end of the 2021 calendar year, so we do allow some additional time and notification, so I wanted to point out that time element. We also work with Recology to ensure both the tenants, the account holders, if they're not the property owners, receive notification when they have delinquent accounts on a regular basis with their billing cycle, as well as the property owners. In the past, that has come up where sometimes property owners weren't being notified regularly, and so we've worked with Recology to ensure that that has been the case, so that when the city sends its annual lien letter, as we call it in the shorthand, it doesn't come as a surprise to property owners, so they should have received several notifications. So we had initially developed the lien list, as we call it, and sent out the letters on May 11th, I believe, and that total amount started at about $25,000 in total delinquencies. We've since gotten that down, just in the last two or so weeks, to $18,000, as identified in your blue folder, Item. So the list that was included with the initial staff report is about a week old. In the last week, we've had several individuals come forward and work with Recology to pay those bills. And there is an additional time period that property owners can work with Recology to have their delinquent amounts paid up until July 22nd of 2022, to provide enough time for us to pull that data together and forward it on to the assessor. So the item before you is to consider the list and authorize staff to move that forward with the assessor based on the updated list as of July 22nd, 2022. Happy to, and also to provide an opportunity for property owners who may want to contest their delinquent accounts to do so in a public setting. And now I'm happy to answer any questions.
It seems pretty cut and dry. Thank you, Emily.
So instead of just jumping to public comment in general, should we offer, if there's anyone here in person or online that would like to bring their grievance forward, that now would be the time to do that?
I'm seeing no one online.
Okay.
I haven't heard from anyone. I don't know if you have.
I didn't indicate the good news. In years past, this has been something that has generated a lot of calls, and there was one mobile home park owner who reached out because there was confusion. Coincidentally, they got the lien letter, as well as their updated delinquent account letter from Recology one day apart, and so they were trying to understand what was due and when, and why they were getting two letters. So that was just a matter of coincidence and confusion that we worked through. Other than that, we have not gotten a single call, to my knowledge, of any confusion or complaints or concerns around lack of communication. So thank you for bringing that up, Karen. I'm really happy to say that it's been a very smooth process this year.
And I just want to add, it's because Deputy Director Benve did a lot of work last year on revamping that process and working with Recology as we transitioned from Arcata garbage over to Recology and just really getting that system cleaned up. So that's brought us here in a much better place tonight. That's why she has the picture.
Yeah, I do remember last year, more, yeah, more calls and concerns. Did you have any questions, or should we go? Let's go to public input first. So is there anybody that's wanting to do public input on this item? We'll take the in-person first. Okay, seeing none online?
Seeing nothing online.
All right.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-66, confirming the report of the 2021 delinquent garbage account fees for lien.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so next, we have Public Scoping Hearing for Potential Projects for Funding under the 2022 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, 22-CDBG, Notice of Funds Availability, NOFA. So could we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah or Jen Dart?
How about the Deputy Director? Okay. So tonight, we have a scoping hearing for potential projects for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program. There's two applications with separate deadlines. One is for housing and community development programs and projects. The other would be for economic development programs and projects. We've got a list of different potential activities and programs and projects for you. I just want to say that I was really excited when I started to revise this list, because several of the ones that were on here, we actually have accomplished. So we'll be bringing you some accomplishments, I think, at your next meeting, so that'll be exciting. There were a few that were added as well. There's some things that have come in from the community that I think we can highlight, and I can go through some of those with you as well. One of the things that I wanted to point out is we need to be careful that there's no duplication of benefits with these activities, so if it's an activity that we're already doing, we can't duplicate that activity. So for instance, we've got the CV programs, the Arcata House Partnership. So if we were going to be doing a homeless services program with some of these funds, that would be something that we wouldn't want to do as far as an application, because we've already got that program running. One of the things that I wanted to highlight was the Business Assistance and Micro Enterprise Loan Program. We currently have that as a, it's a sub-program to our 2017 grant. Our 2017 grant will expire April 31st of next year. So when that expires, we will no longer be able to run that program. So that's one that I would highlight and bring to the top of the list so that we can continue that program, because it would be, you know, it would be leaving that program off the table until the next round. A couple of the other areas that we looked at would be the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I know that's on the city council goals, so I kind of wanted to highlight that. And then for the housing, this has come up quite a bit, a need for a Valley West teen or community center, and so potentially, looking at a planning and technical assistance for that, for feasibility of that center, would be something else that we would like to highlight, because I know Valley West improvements are something that the city council, again, has been looking at ways to move forward. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is really, it's a scoping hearing, so you can add anything to this list. If you have other ideas, if the community has other ideas for things that should be on the list, we'd be happy to add those at this time as well, and then David has.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you, Deputy Director Dart. I just wanted to add a couple of things for context that are also new requirements for the CDVG program. We can dig into it in more detail if you have questions, but the list is really open, as Deputy Director Dart was just mentioning. The intent behind the scoping meeting is to take all ideas and put them on the list, and then at the next meeting, we would try and assess the compatibility of those ideas with the program requirements. And so a couple of the key requirements that, you know, that need to be met for an idea to move forward into a grant is that it has to meet public benefit and national objective. These are kind of terms of art with the CDVG program, but essentially, what it boils down to is that they have to fulfill one of the core objectives for meeting assistance to lower-income communities or beneficiaries, and/or eliminating slums or blight. And then the preponderance of the funds need to go towards people that fall into the target income group, generally speaking, earning less than 80% area median income. So we would rank these, you know, in the next hearing, when we come back and ask for the authorization to apply for a project, we would rank them in terms of, you know, do they meet those national objectives? Do they fulfill a public benefit? You know, how competitive will we be for securing that grant fund, and all of those different elements? But in general, we try and line up the Planning and Technical Assistance Grants so that they give us a future program or project that we can then implement with a further grant. And so I just wanted to reemphasize what Jen was saying about, you know, the Valley West. It's been a project that's been on the list for quite some time, and it would make an excellent Planning and Technical Assistance Grant for this year, and, you know, want to also second the Business Assistance Program that we would love to be able to expand and promote through application on a grant. The one other thing that I'm required to tell you and the community about is the amount of program income, and that we, it's currently, so I'm going to turn it back over to Deputy Director Dart and ask to talk about current balance and how much we anticipate to receive over the current, next fiscal year.
Yeah, so I can talk to you about that. We currently have a zero balance, because all of our program income is dedicated to the Red Roof Inn, and that application is in with CDVG right now. I anticipate that zero balance only lasting until likely July, and then we will start to have a balance again. Every quarter, we get about $100,000, give or take, sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on if we have a first-time homebuyer payoff. So over the next year, you know, we can anticipate having at least another $400,000 or $500,000 in program income. We do have to use our program income before we use grant funds, so by the time we actually get a standard agreement, given their current timelines, we will likely have at least $500,000, if not more, in program income that we would have to spend if we didn't have another project that came up, which is kind of always a balancing act between the program income and grants. But at this moment, we can say that we do not have any program income, that it's all committed to another project. I should also say that we have three, we have the ability to apply for three different activities under each of these categories, I'm sorry, under both of the categories combined, so a total of three applications. They used to do them as combined. Now they're each individual applications, which unfortunately is a little more staff time to put together, so just to be fair about that, we have to do three completely separate applications for each activity we decide to apply for, but we are eligible for three. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks, Deputy Director Dart. I agree with your recommendations for the Build Business Assistance and Micro Enterprise Loan Program, as well as the Valley West Teen Community Center feasibility. I think those are really aligned with the goals that the council has set forth. I, and there's one more.
They had a circle number two, the Economic Development Strategic Plan update, right? Is that the other one of them?
Yeah, and that one, David and I have talked a little bit about. I think we need to brainstorm a little bit more internally about exactly what that would look like, and if it would be eligible, just because of some of the criteria that he mentioned as far as meeting national objective, and would it meet those, would it meet those goals, or would we need to refine it down a little bit? So we may bring some additional information back to you at the next meeting to kind of refine that. It was just one of the ones that was highlighted based on the goals. We did reach out to some of our partners and had communication about, is there anything else you want to add to this list? I would like to say that Lucy Salazar did reach out to me via phone, and she didn't have time to send anything in or wasn't able to be here, but she did want to voice her support for the Valley West Teen and/or Community Center, or both. She really appreciated that that was on this list.
That's great. I would like to throw some support behind Life Plan Humboldt feasibility. I think our senior committee is something that we're really, you know, trying to, you know, plan around, so.
This is just such a good list, and the fact that we can only choose three things off of it, well, maybe not. You know, I don't know. We have to decide today, but yeah, I'm definitely behind.
You don't have to decide.
I know, that's what I said. Okay. So we don't have, I mumbled, we don't have to decide today, but the fact that there are only three things to choose is daunting. I'd also just like to throw some support behind, I'm interested to see, I like, there are kind of, you know, two projects over here that are within the Food Works, kind of Alder Grove area. Both of those seem pretty interesting to me, and just the fact that that is a really good area of our community that has a lot of room for economic development, and to kind of, you know, maybe put some dollars that way could be a really cool. of, you know, maybe put some dollars that way could be a really cool opportunity just to explore that more. Probably leaning a little more towards number five than three, just because, you know, those could almost go together in my mind, it seems. I feel like this is an echo of past things, that I want to consolidate all of the things into one so we can get more done. But yeah, those, and then definitely, I'm 100% behind the Valley West Teen Center. That would be amazing to start to get work on that done, and then continuing the loan program as well. So that's kind of where I'm sitting.
But I do want to thank the Food Works facility. I know that that's been a real boon for, as a commissary, for our many and hopefully more food truck scene. So I just think that's great. It's great that it's at capacity, so maybe someday we can expand.
Yeah, just wanted to add real quickly, too, that some of the Planning and Technical Assistance are, you know, they have certain nuances. So the Life Care Humboldt one, I was speaking with the representative the other day, and we put it on the list because it was requested that we put on the list. But I think that that one probably is not going to meet public benefit. And so we can bring you a more detailed analysis at the next meeting on these. And similarly, and for the same reason, actually, some of the Food Works items that we have on here, they'd be nice to have. But you can do, for Planning and Technical Assistance, you can't do site-specific planning work. So you can't do, you know, plan specification engineering on a specific project with CDVG funds. You can do more of like a planning study. And so we're working with Life Care to see, is there a planning study that, you know, would fit within the parameters of what they still need? They may be a little bit beyond that, you know, and similar with our Food Works facility. You know, these are really more targeted towards like getting specific details on how to build something on that site. And so we'd have to work through the details of how to make that vague enough to, you know, still qualify, but still give us something, you know, that we can use, something tangible we can use.
I was just going to mention, too, that Food Works is full, but we do still have room open in our rental kitchen. So if we have somebody who needs rental kitchen space, send them our way because we will accommodate them. But yeah, there is a lot of people out there right now.
That's awesome, Jen, thanks.
So let's go ahead and open it up for public input. And so this would also be the time, if you have a project suggestion that you'd like to see on the list, that you could make that at this time. And we'll go ahead and start with our in-person first. So if you're, if anyone other than Kimberly would like to speak, please go ahead and line up. Go ahead, Kim. I'm just prompting people.
I thought you were dissing me. Anybody but Kimberly.
In addition to Kimberly.
No, I just wanted to piggyback on the Valley West Teen Center, Community Center, and just wanted to put out there that Kuna is doing a resilient hub feasibility study. So we already have some preliminary work, so you won't be starting cold, and we would be happy to collaborate, whatever that might look like. And then also Lucy did call me and wanted to plug in and just talk about maybe the possibility, if the feasibility study showed, that perhaps the Teen Center and the Community Center might be two separate facilities. We do have a lot of parcels identified out there. We're doing some risk assessments right now, so we'll see how that rolls out.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Hello, thank you. My name is Fred Wise. I just wanted to use the opportunity to speak on some of the things that weren't on the agenda.
Oh, so there will be a time, we'll have a whole time for that. We're right now just doing the block grants, so if you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll match you back up in a few minutes. No worries. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on the block grants? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to online then.
All right, our first online speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening again. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. There are a lot of very important projects suggested on the list, and I really don't want to take away from any of them. In particular, I want to explicitly support the much-needed investment in Valley West. I also want to suggest that city staff review the draft Climate Action Plan for measures which may be eligible for funding under the guidelines, and also to make that a standard practice for all future funding that becomes available. And, you know, if none of the cap measures are eligible for this opportunity, or even if they are, I hope that you will also keep that in mind during your budget study session next week. And I would just say that one particularly important need coming up very soon, I think, will be funding at least one staff position at the city devoted to cap implementation because without, I think, dedicated and empowered staff positions, it seems pretty unlikely that the city will be able to meet the targets once the cap is adopted. And I also, just as a technical matter, in case you aren't aware, wanted to let you know that the video feed for the chamber has put out. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Our next public speaker is Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, this is Matt Simmons again with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. I just want to second what Colin said about potentially using the funds for Climate Action Plan implementation. And I think I'll just add one note, which is that Arcata does not have to wait for the cap to be implemented to start doing some of the awesome things that are in the cap. And so using these funds for things that will eventually be approved in the cap right now is totally an option and something we should do because of the climate crisis and climate reality. So thank you so much for this opportunity to comment, and yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
I see no further comment. I think that feed is back up. So if not, maybe raise your hand, Colin, if you still can't see it, just so I know for sure. But I think it looks like it's back up. So, and that's all the public comment we have.
So Deputy Director, what is, do we have climate action, things that we can look into?
You know, I'm going to have to look at it and then maybe bring something back at that next meeting if there is anything that we think might be eligible. I'm just not sure. So yeah, that was a great recommendation to look at that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I concur.
I was just going to mention, timing-wise, we are going to be talking about dates of future meetings. This is the one item that, although you don't have to make a decision tonight, applications are actually due on June 20th. And I do believe, based on some scheduling, that we are going to be canceled. We are going to be moving the June 15th meeting to the 22nd, and so we will be asking you to set a quick meeting, maybe on the 14th. I think we talked to a couple of you about four o'clock, but we'll talk about that at the agenda setting, but just to make sure we get our application in on time.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we could have a motion.
Is it the motion to direct staff to notice a hearing to authorize submission? Is that that? Yep, all right. And I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to notice a hearing to authorize submission of the city's 22-CDBG applications. I'd also like to direct staff to look into climate-action-themed grants.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that, now we are at the section for people to address counsel on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you're in person and wanting to give comment, please come on up. And if you are online, please raise your hand or press star nine.
Thank you. I apologize for speaking out of turn. Again, I'm Fred Wise. I'll use this opportunity to talk about some articles, some of my website that were not covered in the agenda. There is an article about the population increase from Cal Poly Humboldt. They predict about 3,000 students in eight years who will not have beds, in terms of how many dorms they're building. In addition to that, what they don't talk about, there's be about 700 to 1,200 faculty and staff members. And then there's what's called the job multiplier effect. When jobs come into the area, there's lots of other jobs that are created, everything from schoolteachers to nannies, everything. There's a recent article in Santa Cruz about their university situation. They estimate it's about 2.1 jobs are created. That's about 2,000 additional people. They don't all have to live in Arcata, of course, but they will be here. There's a lengthy article, which is a transcription of the introductory video that came out with the Gateway Draft Plan. I found that I learn better from reading than I do from watching a video, so I transcribed it and added a lot of my personal opinions and comments. There's an article about the percentage of owner-occupied housing in Arcata, which is a concern to people, 63% rental, and what it would take to change that. I'm going to be having an article soon about the importance of 3D modeling, which I think is crucial for people understanding Build Out. There's a humor section, which I add to a little bit. And there's a contact form to write to me, sort of dialogue. I'm working on solutions and recommendations. As we all know, solutions and recommendations are more difficult, but I do have some. And there are some, well, I'm not going to talk about, but I already talked about, okay. The, I want to say that this, I try to separate facts from opinions. My opinion is, building more housing does not in itself make housing affordable. I think that's something that people don't accept. Affordable housing pretty much has to be subsidized, and the city has done a lot of work in the past on doing this. The demand for housing in Arcata, I'll use the word insatiable, there are always going to be people who want to move here. We know that. This is a wonderful place to be. And with the changes that we're seeing in the world, it's going to become even more That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay, so Patricia Cabianica again. I had, I came to the study session last night just thinking I could lurk in the background and was very graciously brought into the whole discussion, which I didn't really know what to expect. And it was really nice to see the communication with staff and the other committees and council. It was really refreshing. I know I've been kind of lurking in on the committee meetings and the different committees, and what they bring to the table is great, so that, you know, you all talking with each other was just a really heartfelt thing to hear and be a part of, or be kind of lurking from the middle of the circle. So thank you for that, and I hope there's more opportunity for that because I think the committee members really appreciated it, as well as the council members. And it just kind of reminded me that we're all a community and we all work together. We all live within Arcata. We all love Arcata for different reasons and the same reasons. And just the cohesiveness of our community is really, really important, and it kind of set me, it sent me home with a lighter heart. But on that note, I don't know if everybody's aware, but try not to get emotional. Jim Test passed away last Thursday, and a great person that really contributed to the community, sat up there as a council member and brought a lot to this community. So I just want to honor him, honor all his family and his friends, and what he did to make this city better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. And we do have, we will be adjourning, I think, our next meeting in his honor, so we will be doing that.
Hi, this is Magretta right now. And I think at a previous meeting, you recall, I had some abbreviations and words that went with them. THC, trust, truth, transparency. H was humanness, honesty and humility. And C was caring compassion and connectedness. But I want to remind you of the CBD because when we're talking about what we can do now in terms of bold action, you know, CBD would be, for me, courageous, brave and decisive. So a little bit of that in our community when it comes to hollering out about the climate reality. I'm going to research a little bit more what they did in Paris, but the mayor of Paris has, for several years now, had a car-free Paris. So I think when we're talking about the future and not having a lot of individual vehicles, especially fossil-fueled ones around, we can do, you know, quick and easy demonstrations of how our world could be without a car and fossil fuel. So if they can do it in Paris, we can do it in Arcata, perhaps. Another, you know, concept was no trash can day, so that we can encourage people to recognize what they gather and throw away on a daily basis. I had a horrible experience when I was demonstrating the compost bins at the farmer's market with, at the end of the day, watching a city staffer in a diesel truck emptying the trashcans and recycle bins with big brown trash bags piled up on the back of the truck because none of the stuff had been separated. Everything was mixed in, including some organic food matter, and it was all going to the landfill. And I think we need to get behavior consciousness of our community. So maybe a no-car day one day and a no-trash-can day on another day so that we can really look and see what we're throwing away and collecting and all that. So I just think we can do some really quick and easy, fun and educational and impactful actions with little effort and a lot of courage, bravery and decisiveness. Thanks.
Thank you, Magretta. Do you have anyone else in person?
Okay, let's go ahead and go to online.
We've lost all of our attendees. There's no one online on Zoom.
Well, as long as it was, as long as it was them voluntarily leaving and not us kicking them out, we're good.
I think so. They went one by one slowly.
Okay. So we're almost at the end. Counsel and staff reports. So we have receive an update from David Loyah, Director of Community Development, on the short-stay vacation rental program.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. I wanted to give you a quick update on our short-stay vacation rental program. It's been in operation for a little over a year, so I wanted to give you a couple of, you know, lessons that we've learned and a couple of quick stats. And then, you know, if you wish to set this as an agenda item based on the conversation, we'd be happy to do that as well. So, okay, so here's kind of the general framework for the regulatory program. We set it so that there would be a cap of 100 permits for non-exempt projects. You may recall that the, there were certain permits where people had, you know, they lived on-site and they felt like they were going to get wrapped up in this permit cap, and then they weren't going to be able to, you know, continue their operations. And so we made those exempt. So today, and these are a little dated, we have a few more actually than this today, but this is from a couple of weeks ago. We have 140 total permits. 71 of those were under the cap, and 69 were exempt. Not all of those permits are issued at this point. Some of them are still working through the process, and we know that there are a few operators out there who haven't come in for a permit yet. So we're pretty close, those. And so that 140 represents about 2% of the housing stock in the city of Arcata. And so those are just sort of the base numbers for you to consider. And then, you know, it is a new program. We've been learning a lot, just both in terms of implementation and, you know, the situations that are out there that we never really thought about when we were developing the program. And so there are a couple of things I wanted to bring your attention to. One is that the fees are not covering the program. We did some initial analysis when we established the program. We set a fee rate based on, you know, some assumptions around how long it would take to process applications and renewals. And so you'll see in your fee resolution, a proposal to increase the fee. I want to remind the council, that was a very sensitive subject for many people in the community, and we set the fees at what has become an unreasonably low number. I wanted to bring that to your attention as you go through the budget process to pay attention to that. Right now, the fees are $50 for an application and $20 for a renewal. We're finding that it takes much, much more time than a half an hour, which is approximately the $50 threshold, to review these projects initially. And as we're going through renewals, we're finding that it takes almost as much time to do a renewal as it does to do an initial application. So we're recommending that we increase the application fee to $150 and a renewal fee to $80, which is still very under the market for most communities. And so we've done some research. There are several communities that are about our size that charge. There are several communities that are about our size that charge much, much higher rates than that, and we can bring you that information if you're interested. The other lesson learned is that, you know, there were a lot of concerns about complaints that, you know, these would have huge impacts on the neighborhoods, and there would be a lot of complaints, and we'd have, you know, this, you know, complaint system to manage. I'm happy to report that we have very few complaints. The, you know, at least my department has not received many. The police department may be taking complaints on site specifics, but we haven't had a whole lot of complaints from the neighborhood about the program. With one, or a couple of exceptions, there have been a couple of operators who have multiple housing units really close to each other, and they've converted all of those units over to Airbnbs. And so we've had some folks in the community that are concerned about, you know, clustering, and we didn't take that into consideration. We talked about it, we discussed it, we took it into consideration, but we decided against setting regulations that would prevent those units from being close to one another and prevent that clustering. So if you're interested in reviewing that again, that's another item that's come up. And then the last little nuance that I wanted to bring to your attention that we really didn't think about when we established this program is the fact that some people own, you know, not just a couple of units, housing units in a neighborhood, but they own entire apartment complexes, that they're essentially converting over. So you have, now it's basically a hotel with maybe one or two, you know, long-term tenants in it. And so, you know, I don't know that we really contemplated that in the initial, you know, regulatory framework, and it may be something that the council wishes to address. We are coming up on renewals right now, and so if there was a change in regulation, you know, it's possible that we could, you know, implement that before the renewals are issued. But that would again be a discussion the council might want to have at a future meeting when you're making decisions.
When are the renewals?
They're on an annual basis, based on the fiscal year, and so technically, they'd be issued July 1st moving forward. You know, I think they're, you know, I'd need to consult with Nancy Diamond, our city attorney, to, you know, try and develop a set of options for the council. If you wish to do something, take action before that.
Yeah, I think it's, it was great to hear this. I wasn't on the council when this was discussed, so I'm happy to hear about, you know, the what we've, the results that we found. I personally would very much like to make this an agendized item and have more public input and discuss more about this. Thank you.
Is there, wait, can we get these numbers that you're saying, or I guess if it's on an agenda, it will be eventually in a staff report then? So, yeah, I would be happy to see it come forward again, and just to get more of the specifics and break it down a little bit more.
Do we have any other staff updates?
No, just to share with the council, you all got binders tonight of our draft budget. We'll be getting that agenda out in a PDF version of it to the community for our budget hearing that starts next Tuesday.
Any updates from council members?
Happy Pride Month, everybody. Just wanted to celebrate that. There will be a small Pride celebration on the plaza on Sunday in conjunction with the Sunday Art Market, sponsored by Redwood Pride. Hopefully, weather permitting, we can celebrate that. There's also a Chamber Mixer tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:00 at Kiki Planet, which is a really cool new shop over in Sunny Bay. So come out to that. And the Chamber will also, has flying a new executive director position. The specifics will be out soon, so if anybody is interested in what will probably be an amazing job, you know, go ahead and look for that. Thank you.
I have a couple. Just a couple of cool things. RCA, we had a very long meeting last Thursday, and Meredith works there, so she knew it was long, too. But one of the interesting things that we decided on, and a cool takeaway, that RCA is going to go into an MOU with Sonoma Clean Power Authority, and they're going to kind of collaborate with us on the wind side and them on the geothermal side, to kind of look at some new and different ways to get renewable energy sources. Also, in addition to that, I'm going to be participating in the, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management Intergovernmental Task Force meeting about wind that is going to be upcoming this Friday. So hopefully more updates to come on that. But I know they're putting out the call areas to lease, I think, at the end of this month, to kind of begin the bidding on deciding, yeah, who's going to build this, where is it going to be built, and kind of moving forward on that. So that's really exciting on the energy front. And then, a little ways off, but exciting news that the I Block Party will be happening this year, and the Sister City Committee is very excited about that. It'll be happening on that Monday of Labor Day weekend, and myself and the mayor will be emceeing it. So it'll be very fun.
Thank you. Just a reminder that Oyster Fest is coming up in June, so if you haven't purchased your tickets and want to attend, it would be great to do that. And I just wanted to kind of circle back when Patricia mentioned, you know, like lurking in the committee meetings or whatever, and it did come up last night from some of the committee people, that they're actually really happy when people show up and come to those meetings. It really does raise the level in the meetings and, you know, kind of just pushes everybody to do better. And so we did talk about, like, ways of promoting those. And so I think a lot of times, you know, people are afraid to participate or don't know how, and I totally understand that. But, you know, almost everything we do is open to the public and really encouraged, because when people show up, it does really, it helps direct and it makes a difference. So don't ever feel like you're unwelcome. And if you do, then there's a problem, because you are welcome. So, thank you. So dates of future meetings, I blew by this last time, and I didn't realize it is, we are supposed to have consensus on these. So we've got a budget overview study session on Tuesday, that will be 6:00 PM here. And then we do consider canceling due to graduations, the June 15th, June 15th meeting, and calling for a special meeting on the 22nd. And then the study session with the Planning Commission regarding Gateway Area Plan, Tuesday, July 12th at 6:00 PM. And then we should also talk about summer schedule for regular meetings. So for A through C, does that work for everyone?
Do we need that June 14th meeting included in that as well?
Okay.
Yeah, just to confirm time, maybe like four o'clock on that, June 14th.
That works for me.
And we'll probably just do it by Zoom, because I know several of you will be coming in. Yeah, we'll be coming in from different areas, so we can just do the entire thing on Zoom.
Okay, and that's just supposed to be a very short one, correct?
It's just the one item approving the CDBG, and we'll get, certainly get you out information ahead of time-
Okay.
-to review. Yeah, just to get our application in.
Okay, so Bridgette, we have consensus on all of those. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, do you want to lead us through the discussion of summer schedule?
Yeah, so the city council, just typically at some point, you don't have to finalize that schedule tonight, but when we get into June, starts to realize that there might be conflicts in the summer. And it is not uncommon for this body, as well as most elected bodies in the state, to set a slightly reduced summer schedule. So if there were dates that was better for us to cancel, you know, I don't know, historically, it always used to be the first meeting in August, but we've also done the first meeting in July, if it gets close to the, to the Fourth of July. So, I mean, it really is just dependent on the council's schedule, and we can take them one at a time. I just, in meeting with each of you, also realize that you are starting to think about your summer schedules. So at the point that you want to have that conversation and look at that schedule, and if there are any meetings that are easier for us to cancel earlier than later, it's good to know.
Unfortunately, I do not have any fun summer plans at this point. I do have some fun fall plans, but-
Yeah, I'm good.
Does anybody have any?
July is sticky for me. I will most likely be missing the July 6th meeting and joining remotely on the July 20th meeting, yeah, because I'll be at a conference that week, but we'll have, you know, great internet access. But, yeah, so, we've talked about it. You know where I sit.
So would that July 6th meeting, would that be the first meeting of the new, like, when does the new council member, when would they be sworn in? I'm sure they'd want to get started.
Most likely, they'll be sworn in on July 20th.
Oh, okay. So I guess that I'd be fine skipping that July 6th meeting, or not, but?
Um, I mean, yeah, we have a small group, and if we're missing one, then that's, we're down to two and maybe three, so maybe we give everybody a break on that July 6th.
Yeah, it is the Wednesday after a holiday weekend. That's kind of weird, because what, Fourth of July is on Monday? Something like that, or is it Sunday?
Yeah, it is Monday.
Yeah. So, either way, not to, as I, I think I told Karen that I don't think I've missed a city council meeting yet, so to keep my tarnished, untarnished record going, let's just cancel it. No.
I don't think we have a perfect attendance award, Sarah.
I would like to put it out there that I really, really enjoyed that study session last night, and I would love to have one scheduled close to mid-year budget review as well, so as we're aligning our goals. I think that would be wonderful.
All right, so it looks like we're going to cancel the July 6th meeting and demand that everybody do something fun, and then I think that's it for now for changes for summer. Okay, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.